Want to welcome everybody here today to the 28th Board of County Commissioners Meeting. If everybody was silent on their devices, we greatly appreciate it. If everybody would stand for the invocation, Commissioner Kinnard will be giving that to us today.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer again today, so thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we pray that you'd be here with us today, guide us in our thoughts, our decisions, our comments, and pray that you'd give us wisdom and discernment as we go about doing the county's business here today. We thank you for the folks in the public who are watching from home and those who have come out here today to give their input and help to guide our community forward. Lord, we pray for our first responders here at home, as well as the men and women all around the world in uniform. We pray that you'd watch over them, protect them, and bring them home safely to their families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If everybody remains standing, we have two female veterans that are here today that will lead us in our pledge. The first one is Ellen McRae. She's a Navy retired intelligence officer commissioned in 1981. She served in a wide variety of positions at sea and overseas. 2001 was a battle group intelligence officer for the carrier Group Three embarked in the aircraft carrier USS Carl Vison, deployed to North Arab Sea. In that capacity, she took part in the nation's intel military response to the terror attacks of 9/11. She retired in 2011 as a Navy captain of 30 years of service. Jane Mundus is retired Vietnam Vet Air, Navy MS-1, and a photographer. Besides serving as treasurer for Female Veterans Network, she's president of the Fleet Reserve and active in the American Legion. So if we would please face the flag and ladies...
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank you for your service and everybody will give them a round of applause for your service. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 28th day of September 2021. In attendance are Chairman Scott Carnahan, First Vice Chairman Ronald D. Kitchen Jr., Second Vice Chairman Ruthie Schlebaugh, Commissioners Jeff Kinnard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Litt.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Approval of agenda, we have an add-on of O3, then we have extra info of E8, E11, and O2. Is there anything else?
The only thing is, the agenda becomes the property of the board once it's printed. The agenda item for H3, the request or ask this item be deleted is up to the board whether you want to or not.
Okay, board, your...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Kinnard.
I would request that we keep H3 on there. There's some, I've had some conversations, and I'd like to share that with the board when we get to that issue. So I'd like to have this discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, any other issues with that?
I would concur.
Okay, so we will keep H3 on. So with that, I'll be looking for approval of the agenda with add-on of O3 and the extra information.
Motion to approve the agenda with the add-ons?
Okay, motion by Commissioner Kinnard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes, 5-0. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kinnard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comments on the consent agenda? No comments, seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes, 5-0. Proclamations.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the proclamations.
Commissioner Kinnard, it's your day. Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments on proclamations? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes, 5-0, and I'll see you all down front.
For those individuals representing for H, come forward, please. You ready?
Yes, sir.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation National 4-H Week, whereas October 3, 2021 through October 9, 2021 celebrates National 4-H Week. More than 7 million young people across the country will celebrate National 4-H Week. This is the largest youth development organization in the world, teaching young people the citizenship, leadership, and life skills. More than 3,500 Citrus County youth participants through 4-H Clubs, school enrichment, and day residential camps programs. Whereas research has proven that participation in 4-H has a significant positive impact on young people, youth engaged in 4-H program are nearly four times more likely compared to their peers to contribute to their communities, pursue healthy behaviors, and engage in science, technology, engineering, and math programs in their out-of-school time. Whereas 4-H development programs make a positive impact on our community. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County is hereby proclaim October 3 through October 9, 2021 as National 4-H in Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five county commissioners.
Hello, everyone. I am Marnie Ward, and I am the Citrus County 4-H Agent. It's my great pleasure to introduce you to several of our 4-H members that are here today. We have Will Ward, our county council president. We have Austin Pearson, who serves as our secretary, and we have Cheyenne Pearson, who helps out with our historian. It is, the 4-H is an amazing program, and I really encourage all of you to consider a volunteer opportunity with 4-H, or even getting your children or grandchildren involved with our programs. We have over 20 4-H clubs that meet around the county. We offer positive youth development for all of our members. In livestock, of course, you're familiar with that, but also in sewing and robotics, engineering, math, and so, please, give us a call down at the extension office if we can help you. Thanks, guys. You did a great job.
Friends of the Library? The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Friends of the Library Month, whereas the work of the Friends of the Library promotes libraries as a cornerstone in the community education, providing opportunities for everyone to engage in lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of the world. And whereas the Friends of the Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our libraries get the resources needed to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, and whereas the Friends of the Library provide outstanding fundraising to enhance the Citrus County library system, collectively contributing over $1.3 million since 2001. And whereas the time and the commitment given by the Friends of the Library sets the example how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners are hereby extending appreciation to the Friends of the Library and proclaim October 2021 as Friends of the Library Month in Citrus County, signed by all five county commissioners.
So my name is Sandy Price, and I'm the president of the Friends of the Library for the Citrus County, and this is our 20th year. We were incorporated in 2001. I want to say over the past 18 months with COVID protocols in place, we had an amazing group of volunteers that were able to do the pop-up sales and the mini-sales, and after our expenses, we were still able to donate $36,000 to the library system. The much anticipated return of our mega sale is this Friday, starts at 3:00 PM. Hope you all are there to support our group and the library of Citrus County. Thank you very much.
Anyone representing mental health awareness? Ready? The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Mental Health Awareness, whereas... Whereas mental health is part of overall health, 25 adults experience a mental health problem each year. In February 2021, 40.8% of adults in Florida reported symptoms of anxiety and depression, and 24.8% of those adults were unable to get needed counseling and therapy. Approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and 3/4 by the age 24. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the 2nd leading cause among young adults ages 10 to 34. And 90% of the people who die by suicide has shown symptoms of mental health conditions according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. Early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental health, mental illness, and recovery. It is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping and in the silence and stigma that far too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Diagnosis and treatment of mental illness can help reduce homelessness, hospitalizations, and incarceration. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, is hereby proclaim October 3 to October 9, 2021 as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Citrus County, Florida, to shine a light on mental illness and fight stigma, provide support, education, and educate the public and advocate for equal care, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Fine. I'm the executive director of NAHME, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and we have brought together a group of people who, in the county, participate in helping with mental illness. The Sheriff's Department is here, they have the Behavioral Health Unit, and they serve also on our board. LifeStream is here, who provides emergency services. We have SMA, and we have Impact, some of our counseling here. So we all work together to make sure that mental health is covered here. It's one out of five people at any given time are involved in a mental health condition, and that's a lot of people to cover. And so, we work to educate, all of us work together, to empower those people and help them live good lives and give back to the community. So, thank you very much, Commissioners.
All right. With that, we will go to open to the public. If you'd like to come up and speak to the board, please come forward. We'll give you three minutes. If you have a letter on file, we'll give you five minutes. So, welcome. Welcome, Bud.
Good afternoon. My name's Bud Osborne, and I'll leave it or not unmut here to talk about Surtelma. A number of meetings ago, Bob Crawford approached you asking for your support and allowing us to place another monument at the courthouse, this time on behalf of the first responders. Just proud to announce that it is done, it is installed, and we encourage you all to go by and take a look at it. Thanks for your help.
Thank you, Bud. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Lisa Bauer, and I am the one that has forwarded you the footage of the flooding in Citrus County. We have had a shrug of the shoulders, there's nothing we can do, and that is not an acceptable answer. People's homes are devastated, our roads are deteriorating, we can't even get cars out of our neighborhood because of the flooding, and we're still getting a shrug of the shoulders. And that is unacceptable. The county is responsible for this. They allowed these homes in this neighborhood to be developed, whether it was because of a grease of a palm or the good old boy system back in the day. But people's livelihoods are being taken advantage of and destroyed, and there's nothing that anybody in this county is doing to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Wayne Adams, and I agree with the madam that was just standing here. I'm part of that flooding, and I've spent, if you look at my right leg, approximately 18 days on my own with a neighbor who's also here. I also have a few other neighbors, there's six of us that are underwater. Our leach fields and our septic tanks have been underwater for three weeks, and no one's able to shower or use their restrooms. It's costing me $50 a day just in gas to pump all this water out. I've got 555 feet, just to give everybody an idea of how long that is, it's 55 feet longer than a football stadium field. And every day, I have to walk that line to make sure our pipe hasn't coming apart. And three days, I was spent in the emergency room due to a bad infection in the right leg, and for good blessings, I'm still here to talk about this. But my major concern is, I read in the newspaper that HUD, I don't know why it's only people that have homestead exemption, but only homestead exemption homeowners are eligible for this financial help. So there's my house and five other houses, and there's probably two or three other homeowners. All six of us have been affected by this excess rain that has caused us flooding. So hopefully with my comments today and other comments, maybe you all can do something for us. Thank you so much, have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Good to see you.
My name is Ron Sobel. I got a civil problem. I got a road problem, and I've spoken to Mr. Wright and your highway department, and everybody's very nice, and everybody gives me the same story. Can't help you. I bought an investment property down in Crystal River on a road called Gem Street. 75% of its road is being maintained, nothing on it except two houses. Section I bought an investment property on, there are eight duplexes. I own one, I got a mortgage on it, but it's an investment. At the end of my road is a nursing home. Now that story I'm getting, and I didn't know this when I bought this property, is that it's a private road. My understanding of private roads is you don't go down there unless you live there. But there's a nursing home at the end of this private road. So there's trucks, visitors, working people, and this road has fallen apart. It's a dangerous road because of the potholes. They're about a foot deep now. But the county won't maintain it because it's technically a private road. And what I found out after all the help, like Mr. Wright, is that when this property was developed and this road was put in, somebody was supposed to file paperwork with the county saying this is now a public road, because there is a business at the end of this road, a nursing home. Emergency vehicles have to go down there. Well, the man who did this development, I think died, and left all of his property in a trust fund. Trust funds are an impossible thing to understand because nobody wants to take responsibility. I can get nobody to help me fix this road. But the next time an emergency ambulance goes down there, blows a tire, and somebody dies in a nursing home, that's on you guys. Now, you've been all very nice and told me I could spend a million dollars and fix the road. I don't have a million dollars. I can't even get anybody else, the nursing home, to answer a phone call about fixing potholes. Your highway department does a great job of fixing potholes. That's all I'm asking for, is to fix some potholes so the next emergency vehicle that goes down this road does not blow a tire. I don't think I'm asking for a whole lot. Now, understand, everybody who owns one of these duplexes pays taxes. Now, maybe we don't pay enough taxes, but you should be able to help out the people living in the nursing home fill some potholes. That's what I'm asking for. And I've spoken to a dozen people, I got a list, and you're all very nice, but nobody's helping me. So that's why I came to see you guys. And the stretcher road we're talking about is less than 100 yards. I'm not looking for a new road, I'm looking for potholes to be fixed.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. How are you?
Good morning. Or to say good afternoon. My name is Robert Bell. I live at 10274 North Russo Drive. I'm here to talk about the flooding issue. The residents that I'm talking about, my partner, she's lived there for more than 20 years, has never had standing water in the yard, other than following a hurricane, and within a few days, that would run off. Today, there is six feet of standing water in the property. There is 15 inches of standing water inside the house. So we have a total loss due to, I don't know sure what happened, I'm here to ask. Something happened in the community, somebody blocked up the natural flow of drainage, and it's causing this water to back up. I've been told, I've talked to many people here at the city council, I mean, I think... Yeah, I did talk to Mr. Kinnard, but I've also talked to Tiffany Crosby, flood control, flood management, whatever her title is. She actually came to the residents, she saw it, and she said, "Well, it's just rain." Yes, it's just rain until it floods your home, and now it's a big issue. There's never any flood insurance required because we were Zone X. She gave me the map, says, "Hey, this was Zone X." But today, we have 15 inches of water standing on our yard. We need help. We need to understand what, somebody blocked up something, somebody did something for all this water to happen to be there today. There is, gosh, I'm so, there is, she, there's this is the second biggest rainstorm in the history since 1960. Okay, so this is the second. What happened to the third, fourth, fifth, the 10th, the 20th time? There's never been standing water, but today, we have standing water. I'm not sure what's going on. I'm assuming that anybody that would do any projects in the community would have to get a permit to change the drainage, but it's obvious, nobody's stepping up. I did talk to also Brian, I think his name is Coffin, he's an engineer. I talked to him also, and I've also talked to the commissioner. We have a bad problem, this is, we're just one homeowner. We're having to be one of three homes in our community that is underwater, but there's numerous homes all along Citrus Avenue that's standing underwater today, and we need some help from the county. I don't, we can't pump it, there's nowhere to pump it, too, and I understand that, but what are, what are we supposed to do?
You set it off.
Yeah.
I used to have a home, and now I don't.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Vicki Brown, and I'm following up on this same issue. I'm a resident of unincorporated Citrus County, and I'm here on behalf of my fellow citizens as well, who reside in this area, specifically in the area of County Road 495 and 488. One of those areas that everyone has acknowledged is known as previously flooded. And here we are today, September 28, just now talking about a state of emergency. Many of our residents have reached out to the local officials seeking any sort of relief, and unfortunately, we also have had those same answers, there's nothing we can do. We understand that due to the unusual circumstances of the weather, no one can wave a wand and make the water disappear, but we do take on bridge, too, there's nothing that can be done, and we're really tired of hearing that. We have people who are unable to live in their homes due to flooding, they're unable to access their homes, some by kayak. Our roads are impassable, becoming more and more impassable because they are literally crumbling to pieces. The roads department and Ms. Tiffany have come out, they have done some efforts, but it's just not enough. We've been told not to drink our water, we can't receive mail delivery, and we have to travel and fill our own sandbags. So it's kind of hard to watch other people on TV who are receiving assistance for similar situations. This is not a situation that we created, and it's so multifaceted, there are so many impacts and so many issues, we really need help. And just to let you know, because we can't have mail delivery, I and my fellow neighbors have to go to Donellen to pick up our mail. So while I'm in Donellen, I'm buying my groceries and buying gas there. I'm not going to turn around and come back into Crystal River to do that. So you are losing funding for the county because of this issue as well. I'd like to know, I've seen the postings for people who have dollar loss impacts, but how are you counting those of us who don't have water, don't have an actual dollar claim to make, but are impacted by this? We'd like to know how you're going to better communicate with the constituency about what assistance you are providing, and are you going to be able to think outside of the box and provide us with a short-term plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
My name is Louisian Path, and I am in the same subdivision, Woodridge Country Estates. I did have somebody whisper in my ear that she thought that the board looked kind of bored with this right now. We're here to ask, why has it taken so long to have a meeting? We are in a state of emergency, and they're not calling it that. We have people that cannot get out of our subdivision. What happens when an emergency vehicle needs to come through? We have begged and asked because the roads are deteriorating under the water. When you climb through the water, your car does this, and this, and this. Okay, so what are we supposed to do with that? My husband and I bought two new vehicles because of that. We had to buy a truck and a Jeep because I got to work, we got to get out, and for an emergency, what are we going to do? So we're helping our neighbors, but all of a sudden, I'm seeing new trucks because we have all had to purchase them. Who's going to pay for that? Why has somebody not come out and looked at those roads and then said, "We're going to dump something in here so you can get out"? That has not been done, at all. I asked for two craters to get filled, they did do that. I asked for another one yesterday, they did not do it today. The craters, if you look inside of them, the road is deteriorating and the water is coming up. I understand it's a water issue, but the other issue is, we have one way out. And so, one road is closed, the other three are open, one way out, and the road water is this deep, and we're trying to get our vehicles through. I've lost the bottom of two of my cars, we had to go buy cars because it ripped off the bottoms of our cars. This is unacceptable, that everybody is looking bored, not interested up here, and it's taken this long to get a meeting.
Thank you. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great. I happen to be the lucky husband of that woman that just...
Please state your name.
Yeah, the two cars, by the way...
Please state your name.
Oh, Joe Pap. Those two cars did, we were, we were, we're looking for retirement, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. I would like, I would love it if the board would address why we haven't been declared a disaster zone. I mean, any other place that floods, you know? And what the answer I get is swift mud. And swift mud has wonderful plans, three years out, two years out, but that doesn't help now. So why can't we, here in Citrus County, go through the proper channels, and I understand it has to go to the governor, then the president, whatever? Are we taking any, are we taking any steps towards that right now? So if you would address that, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Sir, you can't come back up?
I forgot to mention...
Sir, you've already spoken, thank you. Sir, you got, you've already spoken, thank you. How are you today?
Hi, fine. I'm Rosemary Josephson. I live at Discofani Loop, and that loop is not a loop anymore, it's a river. And we're talking about different things, but we're not talking about the people that live there. There are children walking through that mucky water, whatever's in it, and going to school. Do we live in a third world country? I didn't know this could happen anywhere in the United States. Unless you know you live in a flood zone, which we don't, and now we have a river. I have to go live someplace else. Not right, what's wrong? These are people. I haven't seen some elderly couples in a while, I don't really know them that well. I don't know how they're getting in and out, or if they are getting in and out, I don't know. Somebody has to do something for the people, not for, for, for the streets and for all that stuff. That's a good idea, but something for the people that live in the United States of America. That's not that right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live next door to her, and I have a lake in my backyard.
All right, hold on, hold on, let, so, go ahead, I need your name.
My name is Norma Morsiglio. I live at eighty-six ninety-two North Discofani Loop. And I have a lake, I have a lake in my backyard, and I just barely can get my mail because it's kind of flooded there. The whole side yard is flooded. And I've lived here, I bought my property in two thousand and six and built it in two thousand and eight. And before I bought my property, I checked to make sure that we were not in a flood zone. And my understanding was, there hadn't been any major rain there, I mean, nothing that, that would flood for many years before that. And all of a sudden, we get two rainstorms, and everything's flooded. And I don't think it has anything to do with the land itself. I think it has to do with something the county did, some pipes to forward the water somewhere else. So downtown is nice and clear, it's beautiful. But everything else above it, Citrus Avenue, gets flooded. So there's gotta be an engineering issue there that needs to be looked into.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my wife. The, the word on the street is that, I guess the county had done something with downtown where if it looked like it would rain, downtown would flood. That was a couple of years ago. Now downtown is completely dry. There's always been a flood zone down there. And now, all of a sudden, where all that piping's been put up on Citrus Avenue, where that piping stops, after that, everything's flooded. Granted, we've had a record rainfall, and I understand that flooding's gonna happen. But my house was built in nineteen seventy-five. It's a cinder block house. And far as I know, there has never, ever been any standing water around there. Now they, we got habitat houses there, which are stick frame houses. My neighbor, Wayne Adams, was, was up here before. He's got about that much water throughout his entire house. The next house over to, over to him has six kids. They're flooded out. The kids are walking through this water, and God knows what the heck is in there because we can't get our septic systems working, we can't go to bathroom. We have to be a little creative in that respect. And I've called a lot of different departments in the county, and everybody I've talked to says, I can't help. The only one that gave me a call back was Tiffany from engineering. And she was really nice, really good. So I don't know, I'm not familiar with how this works. I mean, I'll come up and voice or vet my grievance, and I guess you guys go back and, you know, do a huddle and figure out what you want to do. I was hoping that maybe you could declare a state of emergency. From what I understand, FEMA would come in if you did that, try to pump some of this water out. And I was asked, where are they gonna put the water? Well, we stopped in La Canto at the Dunkin' Donuts, and there's about a two-acre hole in the ground in which I think all the water that I've seen around here, if they just dumped it and poured it in there, it'd be fine.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Then once, once everybody's done, we're open to public, the commissioners will address the concerns. Welcome.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Frank Papson from Arrowhead. And I've been listening to everybody complaining about the same things. And I have a slightly different outlook at this. I understand that you're gonna raise our stormwater fees, even though a lot of these people are never gonna benefit from it. But my question basically is, you're getting twenty-six million dollars for drainage. And so far, I haven't heard a word about what you're gonna do with that money. And I was wondering when you were gonna address the people and tell them where the money was gonna go. Because this, everyone in this room could probably give you a hundred reasons why you should spend it where they are. But of course, you know, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, and I understand some of it, but other things I don't understand. One of the things that I do not understand is the fact that, on all these unincorporated areas, you let people come in there with truckloads of fill, and they dump it anywhere they want to dump it, and they put in these homes in there, wherever they want to put them, and they change the flow of water. And it seems like there are no inspections done prior to these people filling in all these lands, and they are creating problems for the rest of the people. And I was under the impression that was a, a city or county responsibility zoning. Water management, flood control, somebody should be responsible for that type of problem that people are having all over the place, and it's, from the sounds of it, it's worse. There are people actually worse off than Arrowhead, from what I'm hearing today. And I, you know, I'm almost relieved in hearing that there are. But anyways, I ran my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
You have a nice day.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Ray, and I serve as general counsel for Nature Coast Emergency Medical Services. I understand that there's an item O on your Jennifer discussion, but I wanted to take this opportunity to provide you an update from Nature Coast. I suspect by now, you have been advised by your counsel as to actions Nature Coast took at its board meeting yesterday, and I wanted to appear before you today to provide some explanation behind that, and some rationale and assurances as to the ongoing transition. So because of the financial picture that Nature Coast is in, given the current state of negotiations with the county, the directors, who are all volunteers and are served without compensation, have a fiduciary duty to the organization to take steps to protect the organization's best interests. At issue at this point, I believe negotiations in the transition has been a very cooperative and collaborative process. Nature Coast is committed to that, and they will not take any action to disrupt the transfer of services to be effective as of October second at eight AM. That is in play. But the board did vote to authorize staff to pursue consideration of a petition for bankruptcy, most likely liquidation. Behind that is this, as of the termination of their contract on October first, they will have no ongoing revenue without an ability to collect on outstanding receivables that they have billed for, for services that they render through the first. There is language within the contract that indicates that those receivables will transfer to the county effective with the termination. And we have posed that question to your staff, and that is still a pending unanswered question as to whether or not the county is going to assert a right to those receivables within either as of the effective date of termination or immediately thereafter. Without the ability to collect on those receivables, Nature Coast is not in a position to adequately fund its ongoing obligations. Of most concern is, relates to an employee self-funded health plan. So that means that in addition to monthly premium, Nature Coast has to set aside reserves to pay for claims that will come in in the future that employees who are participants in that plan may submit, or their health care providers may submit. That is an ongoing obligation that can extend up to one year beyond plan termination. So even if Nature Coast takes every effort to mitigate plan expenses, they have a potential one-year timeframe with which there may be ongoing funding obligations for the health plan. With that in mind, they did vote yesterday to consider filing a petition for bankruptcy, specifically for liquidation, so that their ability to collect on those accounts receivables remains at, at issue. A simple resolution to that would be a commitment on the part of the county to allow Nature Coast to collect on the receivables for services rendered through the first. And so, that is essentially the crux of the issue and what would put them in a position to actually exercise that. And if you would just afford me one moment, that petition for bankruptcy will not be filed until sometime after the effective transfer of operations. And it is designed not to affect any transfer of assets that the county may need to be able to perform those services as of October second. I will remain for the rest of your meeting if there's questions for me at the scheduled agenda item. If not, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
How are you?
Rodney McRae. I live at one zero six seven zero West Halls River Road on the beautiful Homosassa River. And I actually came all the way over here just to speak to one commissioner. But then I thought I'd hang around for a little bit. And thank all of you publicly, as a group and individually. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Kitchen, Commissioner Carnahan, Commissioner Davis. Slavak, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Davis is my name.
And always, Commissioner Crenard. Hey, thank you guys for everything you're doing, not only for the county, but for Old Homosassa, too. And I speak not only for me, but for a lot of people in Old Homosassa. With the sewer projects that's going on, with the waterway issues that we're dealing with, we appreciate your help. You might call this bootlicking, and very well may be, but it is sincere. And I just want that out there. I understand that one of the issues that we had was the slow-speed area, and I understand that it came back to the county. And the county now is supposedly to draft an ordinance or something to that effect. Just curious to where that stands and what the next issue is with that. And last, but not least, the mayor is now a grandfather.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hey, nothing better.
Thank you, Rodney.
That's a hard act to follow.
I know, but I'm, I'm a recent grandfather, too, for the fourth time. But I'm not the mayor. Commissioners, Josh Wooton, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, and this is just for a point of clarification, I think I understand it, but when we were here at the last meeting, we talked about the transfer of the YMCA, and we talked about the core contract, and I see here now that it's on the anticipated completion date of ten twelve, so that's the meeting that it will be coming.
It will be at the next meeting. We had a lot of stuff going on, so they asked me if we could push it, and so it will be on the next agenda.
Thanks for the clarification, thank you.
Any other speakers? How are you?
Fine, good afternoon.
Good.
My name is Mary Ann Wetherington. I am a resident of Citrus County, and I'm not here today to talk about water. I, I wanted to speak on item E, number ten, the employee pay increases. Much of the general public do not understand the perks that come with working in the government. I myself didn't understand it until I had an aunt pass away. Her husband spent thirty years in the United States Congress. She was getting eighteen thousand dollars a month because of that. And he hadn't been alive for fifteen years. So first, I would like to see a direct comparison of rate of pay for the same job in the private versus the public sector. Private sector employees are responsible to save for their own retirement, and they must pay the public sector wages and the pensions. In some cases, government employees earn more in retirement than they did while actively working. While I worked, I put five percent of my gross wages in a 401K plan, other funds into an IRA, and still other monies into other investments. I did this because I didn't have a pension. At the same time, my tax dollars were being used to pay government employees' wages and their retirement packages. This should all be reflected in public employee pay scales. Their rate of pay should be lower than their private sector counterparts. Second, I would like to know the overall percentage increase that's being approved and the justification behind it. The twenty twenty-one Social Security COLA is one point three percent. According to suburbanstats.org, twenty-nine point four percent of the Citrus County population is sixty-five years of age and older. Many of these people are on a fixed income. They cannot afford to pay large salary increases for federal, state, and local employees while they themselves are driven into poverty. Third, I would like to know what system is being used. Is it a merit, performance-based system? Is it a COLA? Are years of service being factored in? Fourth, I would like to know the percentage of the Citrus County budget that goes to total compensation, the salaries, benefits, taxes, retirement plans, everything. Now, I understand that there are unions and collective bargaining agreements that are in play, but that's not what's on the table today. In closing, I would like to know how I, as a citizen, can become more involved in affecting the decision-making process in the future. I want to know that public employee total compensation packages are equal to the private sector, especially since the private sector is paying for it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public speakers? Any other one that come forward? Well, once, twice, okay, we're gonna close the public portion. Commissioners, Commissioner Davis.
May as well lead off. Run through the quick things real. Bud, thank you for the monument effort and update, very much appreciate that. Rodney, thanks for the love and congratulations on being a grandfather. Josh, looks like you got your question answered. And last speaker, Mary Ann, I think you said Wetherington? From what I've seen, the government pay is actually less than private. So if we were equal, it'd be paid a lot more, based on what I've seen. And we are also not, we, we more need to be competitive with surrounding counties, not with the private sector. And we are actually typically under surrounding counties. But I'll let the county administrator answer the rest of the absolute details. Now into the, the hard stuff. The flooding. Number one, I've received a lot of heartbreaking emails. And I worry most for the, the folks that don't have boats, don't have kayaks, don't have johnboats, don't have airboats, don't have high-profile vehicles, especially the elderly. Got some seriously heartbreaking emails, can't get to the grocery store, can't get to work, for those that are a little bit younger. Can't have EMS out here, et cetera, et cetera. So Labor Day, I went out in, with the fire rescue with a, a high-profile brush truck and toured Arrowhead, saw that firsthand, took some photos, took some video, came back to staff, talked about a long-range plan for Arrowhead. Very little we can do short-term when there are private roads because we're not actually allowed to work on private roads as, as the government. This past Sunday, I went out after three dry days, so this was presumably better than it was three days ago, or three days prior. Sunday, I toured the four ninety-five, four eighty-eight area, Citronell and whatnot. That is horrific. Again, high-profile vehicle, the water, very, very jacked-up truck, and the water almost came to the foot treads to get into the vehicle. So I would estimate at least two feet in areas on, I think it was North Cut Road. And any house that was between the two deep pools, unless you have a high-profile vehicle, you ain't getting out of there. So I do understand the devastation. The, I do push back on the government causing this. This was a five-hundred-year rain event. Five hundred years, guys, none of us were here, none of our buildings were here five hundred years ago. If you live in a lower area, quote-unquote basin, with a little bit of higher land around you, that water has absolutely no place to go. Crystal River Main Street can, guess what, it can flood into the river. Okay, so there's plenty of drainage there. If you are living in a bowl, you didn't realize it because we have really porous soil, and we absorb water very, very quickly. The aquifer is at ninety-seven percent plus right now, which means the water table is really, really high. Water has no place to go except evaporate. I talked, I reached out to, here's what I've done since then. I've talked to the Health Department, Tito Rubio, the director. I've talked to him about the septic, the dangers of the septic's backing up, and he said, absolutely, if it's backing up, you shouldn't be using it. And he said, there wouldn't be any solids getting out into the floodwater, but certainly some effluent with, containing E. coli could be floating around in there. So you don't need to. So you don't need to be in those types of situations. EMS can't get there, people can't get to work, et cetera. Pumping, the quantity is simply too vast. There's too great of a distance, too vast of water. It's just simply not remotely possible. So here was my suggestion last week. I pushed, or I suggested to staff that we do something last week. They called an executive policy group meeting on Friday, which I understand was highly productive. Our chair was our BOCC representative there. And that's why the possible emergency declaration is on the books for today, and there'll be a lot more conversation about that. To me, the number-one thing was that our communication needs to be, if you are stuck in those houses where you can't get out, then if your neighbors, we're a pretty self-sufficient county, if your neighbors can't help you, get out, give us a call, we'll get you out, deliver you to any place in the county, friend, family, or hotel. If you cannot afford a hotel, then our excellent new Housing Services Director, Michelle Alfred, has already helped several residents that I put in touch with, Michelle Alfred, to get funding through United Way or Red Cross for the hotel. So that's what we've done so far, that and of course, the sandbag sites. So we'll be talking about this a lot more later.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes, sir. Not too much to add to what Commissioner Davis so succinctly covered, other than the fact is that we're not bored. We just don't sit up here and joke and act, you know, like we're, you know, we really don't care. I think what you see is concern. Just so you know, in the No Name Storm 28 years ago, we were flooded out, my family, my two-year-old at the time. And, you know, obviously, a lot of people were. We had to go months and months and months, you know, to even try to find a contractor to come in and work. So it displaced us, you know. So we know what you're going through, but it's one of those things. I mean, I don't know that, you know, it's interesting that people complain about government, and then as soon as something like this happens, the first thing they say is, what's government going to do? Well, I think we have been proactive, and one of the things we did is we went forward on the stormwater management plan, because, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now, you don't want to hear the county had an opportunity to deal with stormwater and didn't do it. So I think you're going to see that. And Crystal River, gentleman, I think, made a great comparison. When you see the storm drainage, you don't see the flooding. So Crystal River has storm drainage. When you get outside the city, you don't. So there's another reason why we look at things like the stormwater plan. So, and again, the gentleman from Swift Mud, when he was here, is fascinating, because I think at the time, he said we were two inches away from setting the all-time record, which was like in 1942 or something. And I think we got about another five or six inches of rain after he said that, so we have passed that. So does that mean it's not going to happen again next week? We don't know. Might be 500 years if it ever happens again. But it's one of those things that we have to deal with, and there's simply no place to pump it. I love reading the all-knowing folks over at the Chronicle Editorial Board when it's pointed out to me that, well, the county just needs to do something. And so my challenge is, tell us what to do. And their answer is, they don't know. They have no clue. But government needs to do something, because government fixes everything. Well, in this case, government can't. If, as Commissioner Davis said, if you pump it, it's got to go someplace. The other thing that I found really interesting is it could have been a whole lot worse, because there's, I've traveled north sometimes, and to see all the rivers up in North Florida flooded, you know, totally flooded and closed, state parks closed down, and we go, what's happened? And they go, oh, because of all the rain up north, we could have had a worse situation had this rain been further south, and not just been Citrus County, but a lot of that water from down south travels up to us. So as bad as it was, you know, it could be worse. But again, all we can say is we have to weather through what we have. Commissioner Davis gave you some great resources, things that can be done. And again, it goes without saying, we are restricted by law to work on private property. To go out and work on a private street would be no different than me sending staff over to a friend's driveway and have them repair it. You know, we just can't do that. Public money can't be used on private property. And I think everything else was covered. There was a few things that said the 26 million for drainage, that's a new number to me. The word on the street, that sounds to me like Facebook's, don't pay any attention to it. And again, if you have questions, as some of the folks did, call in and talk to some of our excellent staff people. I will make one comment about the last speaker. Again, it's kind of ironic that we were just beat up for not paying our workers enough. We were just beat up by saying, you don't pay the EMT people, you don't pay paramedics enough, they're all leaving, they're gone someplace else. And then we have somebody that says, you should cut back on the pay of the county employees. We have been trying, our goal has been to attract the best employees we can, pay them well, and give them benefits. And in some cases, they don't make as much dollar-wise, because their benefit package, in some cases, can be better than the private sector. But we do that to retain employees, as most good employers do. And again, a lot of pay raises you'll be seeing coming up. The county, the commission can, you know, has some we'll talk about, but again, you got to remember, there's a state mandate that says the minimum wage for everybody goes up, you know, over the coming years. Matter of fact, I think Friday is the first day getting to $10 for everybody, from what I understand. So, again, you know, sometimes people don't like it. If you call me, and you call me, and you call me, and I don't call you back, that's because I called you back once and you didn't like what I told you. So you're not going to like it the second or third time when I call you back and tell you the same thing. So we hear what you're saying, but it's not one of those things, that it's an isolated incident, we can go out and help one person. I will tell you, though, it is historic. I live in Sugar Mill Woods. I've never, ever seen it where you can drive down the main drag in Sugar Mill Woods, and you have to be careful that you don't throw a wake into people's front doors that live on the main. That's the way it was during the height of the flooding. And again, the folk, one thing you got to keep in mind, too, the folks from Swift Mud said it's not going away soon, because the aquifer is so full, that most of this water's going to have to disappear by evaporation. That's what he stood here and told us. So I know, again, that's not what you want to hear, but, you know, sometimes our job is to tell you what you don't want to hear, as well as, you know, what you're looking to hear. So I think that's all I got.
Okay. Rodney, very funny. And Mary Ann, I've been in the private sector for 30 years, and I can tell you that county employees are definitely underpaid. We're hard-pressed to get them to even $14 an hour. I had no idea how the employees that we have and the dedication where they could go somewhere else and get a much higher pay. And I'm proud that they would continue to stay with us and do the work that they're doing. As far as $18,000 a month, I can assure you that there's not one person on this board that will be $9,000, $8,000 close to that. You know, it's just sickening to think that that could be going on, and that is much higher governmental than I will ever be. Flooding, I find it interesting that you would say that we look bored, because from the beginning, I know all of us have been trying to do things and asking about emergency orders and state of emergencies, and we've been hitting the same brick walls that y'all have been hitting. And my brother lives in that area, and I know what he's going through. So to say I'm bored, it can be a little insensitive for you to say that, because, you know, I also live in this county, and I know what people are going through. As far as the elderly people, I hope that people are doing calling and getting wellness checks on them, because without an address, I don't know who to do a wellness check on. And quite a few of you are in here today, because I said you need to come, because we need to hear your story. Because without hearing these stories, we can't, you know, we can't show the gravity of what is going on. So we're trying, and that's what we can do, and we're going to just keep trying and pushing forward. I am curious about the road that has a nursing home on that. I think that is something that I hope the staff could get an answer back to us and let us know what's going on with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
All right. The flooding, I took notes on each individual speaker that came up and gave us their input. This, obviously, a big part of this is in my district. I have been up there more than a handful of times at this point, driving around, seeing for myself, visiting some of the residents who've asked me to come up there and see their place, looking at different culverts, sitting down and talking with staff about that. There are a couple possible options down the road to help somewhat. It's not going to be any major help, but, and it's certainly not going to help with all the water that's sitting there now. It's more of a long-term, I don't even want to say a fix, but long-term help, I guess, to try and drain some of the water off of that area. There's, and while you may not necessarily like the answer, there simply is nothing that we can do. No matter how many times somebody says it's unacceptable, it's, we can't. And to, I guess, to put this out there, let it out of the bag here, quite frankly, it doesn't sound like FEMA is going to do anything.
I was going to add, interesting.
You know, we are, we've got on our agenda today to declare a state of emergency for the flooding. There are certain thresholds that have to be met there. Whether or not we meet those thresholds, and we don't set those, that's stuff that's set by the federal government. If those thresholds are met, then maybe, maybe there's a possibility of a federal loan program. But FEMA is not coming to the rescue. They're not coming to our rescue, they're not coming to the homeowner's rescue. That is just, that's just not going to happen. I know that's not what you want to hear, but these are the conversations that I've been, that I've been having with folks up there. And again, I know, I know that's not good news, but it's telling you the truth. You've heard it over and over and over again about this being a, now a historic rainfall for our area, and there's just, there's just no place for the water to go at this point. So fixing the potholes, you've heard if it's a, if it's a private road, we can't do it. Apparently, there's some question about whether, maybe there's a question about whether or not it's a private road. If it is a private road, we can't put public money into it. Once this water goes down, the county has got a whole lot of roadwork to do up there. All those county roads that are sitting underwater, I've no doubt that the, you know, there's lime rock base issues, there's asphalt issues. We've got, we've got problems to deal with up there as far as our roads go. Let's see here, the flooding downtown has been addressed. There is absolutely no way that you could move that much water, quite frankly, to any place in the county, much less uphill to the center part of the county. And let's see here. Rodney, thank you again, sir, and hopefully we'll continue to make progress on that slow speed area, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir, and I'll wrap it up. Yeah, I mean, when it comes to flooding, we got flooded all over the county. My district, every district here, we have flooding in. I promise you that our engineering department, us commissioners, are out there looking at the issues, but we can't do anything until the water recedes, okay? You know, our engineering department has a list, our public works has a list of where we can go and start trying to do some things. But trying to pump it, trying to move it, it's just, it's just nowhere for it to go. We are going to talk about a state of emergency today, I can tell you now. Somebody just sits on the Board of Directors for Floor Association of Counties. I've been on the phone with them Thursday, Friday, I've been on the phone with our emergency management. This today is going, the state of Florida has not put in a state of emergency out there, and our county hasn't been listed. Therefore, we do not meet any thresholds to get any kind of money from the state or FEMA. What this will be today is this will be for a low-interest loan for those that do not have insurance, if you meet the threshold, okay? So, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and put that out there. So what I'm going to do is, once we get done with, open to the public here, us making the comments, I got some time certains, I'm going to get out of the way, and then I'm going to pull the county emergency to the top, so you guys can listen to what we have here. But I'm born and raised here. I grew up out there on 495, some of those subdivisions. I know Pat Fitzpatrick lived in one of those. His home has flooded three or four times in that subdivision. This rainfall is just, gets down in these basins, and usually they can get, it can get out, but with the rainfall we had, the ground's saturated, it's just, it's just a problem. But if we had the answer, I promise you, we'd snap our fingers and we'd get it done. But unfortunately, we don't have the answer, so what we have to do is let the water recede. I think everything else has been covered, so with that, I'm going to go to...
Can I make one quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. One quick comment, I really appreciate, one gentleman came up, said this was his first time here, he didn't know how this worked. Perhaps we all got together and huddled in the back when this was done. I just want to make it clear that we're not allowed to do that. So the only time the board can meet is in a public meeting like this. So the only time the five of us get to talk...
Right.
...discuss ideas, brainstorm, whatever you might want to call it, has to be at a publicly advertised workshop. So, A, appreciate the gentleman being here, but just to let you know, some people say, well, it'd be a lot easier to do business if we could do that. Perhaps so, but that's not what the law allows us to do.
Mr. Schleball.
And I was off on my addition, it's 16,000. We won't be close to 16,000 for retirement.
All right. With that, we're going to go to H1, a 130 public hearing for Holbert Construction for Sandra J. Fleming.
What number is that?
No, I do not. What is that?
Do you want a copy of it?
What is it?
I don't have time to read it, so it doesn't matter. Yeah, I don't either.
Those that have flood issues, please stick around. I'm going to bring it up as soon as we're done with these, and y'all can listen to what we're going to talk about when it comes to the emergency.
Mr. Chair, the only reason that I handed, asked Doug to print those out, was Commissioner Schleball said she didn't get the email with the attachment.
All right. Ms. Katu, how are you?
Good. Ms. Lynn, do you have a resolution to read, or do we need to? We don't need to read the resolution. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you. This is PV 2101, Holbert Construction for Sandra Fleming. There is a PowerPoint in your backup. I know you've got a long agenda, so I'm just going to go ahead and explain this. It's vacating platted drainage and utility easements on two lots in the Crystal River, Crystal Manor Unit Number Two subdivision. The applicant has a house permit and a detached garage permit in-house. They were avoiding the easement between them, but they would like to actually put something on top of that. So they are holding their final inspections, trying to get this straightened out. And the representative is present. The Planning and Development Commission did hear this on August 5, 2021, and recommend approval. And you have approvals from all utility companies in your backup.
Okay, thank you. Staub, or anything? Okay. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public hearing. Is there anybody to speak for or against? Anybody to speak for or against? Going once, twice? We're going to go ahead and close the portion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kitchen.
Since nobody else is jumping out there, I guess I'll say...
I know, I thought it was Commissioner Kennard's day here.
Yeah, I know. Okay. I would say we approve and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution approving PV 21-01.
All right, I'll second that.
And direct the clerk to record the resolution in the public.
All right. Is there any other discussion, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good deal. H2?
Okay. You're fine. PV 2103, McKenzie permitting for Growland LLC. This vacates platted utility easements on some lots in the Inverness Highlands Unit One area, backing up Thomas Street between State Route 44 and Thomas Street. The applicant would like to put some construction between there, actually a driveway to help out with parking. The Planning and Development Commission did approve, recommend approval on August 19, 2021, and you have approval from all utility companies.
Okay. Mr. McKenzie, anything?
No, appreciate your approval.
All right, thank you. With that, we're opening up the public hearing. Is there anybody to speak for or against? Anybody to speak for or against? Going once, twice? We're going to go ahead and close the public portion. Commissioners?
Chair.
And Schleball.
I would like to make a motion to approve this and direct, to execute the resolution and direct the clerk to...
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Schleball?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right. H3. With this, this is a public hearing on Medicaid Assessment Program Resolution.
We have outside counsel that's going to join us.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Duke, can you hear him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, get that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to commissioners, I know that someone got some questions, some to be answered, so with that, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to jump out there, seeing the, I asked that this not be removed from the agenda today. I took a, a very strong position on this in our last meeting, and have had a number of phone calls since then, and obviously, obviously, I've been doing a bit of research, more background information on this, and I have changed, I've changed my position on this, and hopefully can, can bring the board to see the position that I'm at, and I believe that ultimately, this is something that, that we should approve, and that the, the county is protected. This is a, this is a good thing that the state legislature has, has supported and has asked the federal government to support this. The federal government has chimed in as recently as April of this year and supported this as well. I apologize for the last minute stack of paperwork that I, I know none of us can get through at this last minute, but we've gotten an email, and I overheard Commissioner Schlebow saying she didn't get the email, so I wanted to make sure everybody had that stuff, to be able to look back or reference whatever, if you wanted to, so...
All right, with that, I'm going to go to our attorney, Madam Attorney, you want to pipe, or, you know, give us any background, or you want us to go through our, Commissioner Kitchen?
Yeah, before the attorney speaks, I'd just like to say something. First of all, with all due respect to my colleague, you didn't come out against this, you called it a scheme, you called it an outrage, you said that we should be up in arms about it, and the only thing that I know that's happened since then is there's been a lot of heavy arm twisting coming down from Tallahassee, okay? So as we continue on today, because I respect your opinion very much, if you end up supporting this, I would like to know what that arm twisting consisted of, in order to you to not just have a change of heart, but, but I wouldn't even call this a 180-degree turn. I mean, because the issue that we left here as, and if you recall, this wouldn't even have come back had it, but we gone with your original recommendation, that we shut it down on that day, okay? So again, I know people can have new information and so on, but what I, where I left off, Mr. Chair, and this, this is all I'm concerned with today. We said the last time, I believe the majority of us said, is if we did not have the support of our county attorney, our outside counsel, Greg, whatever, I don't know...
Stewart.
Stewart, and the county administrator, saying that they felt that the county was protected, county taxpayers were protected, I would absolutely vote against this, and I intend to do the same thing today unless those three folks give me information that's different. The only thing I've heard, since I've talked to two of them, haven't talked to our outside counsel, is that the argument not to do it has even gotten stronger. And when we get to it and you hear the explanation, unless something new has developed in the last couple hours, this, this is kind of like a marriage and a divorce. You know, if people want to get married, they love each other forever, they promise it'll always be sunshine and roses, and nobody will ever sue anybody, and everything, everybody will live happily ever after, until the day of the divorce rolls around, and then everybody forgot all the promises and all the niceties, and oh, I promised never to sue you or whatever. And there's two big outstanding questions, which I'm sure the council will address. So again, with all due respect to all of our friends in Tallahassee, I work for the Citrus County taxpayers. I'm concerned about the, the potential of this coming back, not during my term, but some future term, and I know, Mr. Chair, when we took over, all we kept hearing was about the terrible things the previous boards had done, and I just don't want to see this coming back on the taxpayers a few years down the road, it's a terrible thing that the board had done. Now, if our assurances are met, great, I'm on board, but if, if those folks say that, that the protections that we ask for are not there, I cannot support it.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner?
Again, with all due respect to my colleague, this has nothing to do with arm twisting. There's additional information that, that I've gotten from doing some research, from calling other counties and finding out what they have done, how they got to comfortable. Just today, as, as, as much as I love talking with attorneys, I've been on the phone, phone with no less than four different attorneys, finding out, getting their opinion on several different ways to handle this. So you're right, I did take a strong position against it, and the more that I dove into this, I have gotten to a position of being very comfortable with it, not only okay with it, but I think this is a good thing and something that we should support, so we'll see.
Can I follow up? Did those four attorneys work for us? Are they paid by us?
One.
One? Okay, all right, all right, who was that?
That was Greg.
Okay, so Greg told you that it's okay thing to do?
No, I didn't, no, I didn't, no, I didn't say that all four of them did.
Okay.
I talked with Greg, and I asked him what specifically the issues were, and, you know, what the hangup was, and he explained to me that there were two primary issues, and one of them, he felt like could be handled with some contractual language. The other one, he didn't know how we get past that. And so then, I spoke with the attorney, the counsel for the hospitals, and asked them about this one issue. Well, we talked about both issues, and then we talked about the, specifically the one issue, and there's, there is a provision in this proposal which addresses that. That's what brought me to a position of being comfortable. I spoke with a, a, a contract attorney outside of both of the county, both Hernando and Citrus County, and asked them to look at the hold harmless agreements that Hernando County approved, and I've spoken with the Hernando County attorney, and questioned them about, you know, what, what, what transpired in their discussion of these things. So one of our, one of our attorneys, Greg, our counsel, because he's the one we've hired to handle this, I had a great conversation with him, but then I talked with other attorneys as well, trying to find out the, the nuances, the differences between these different types of attorneys, or different types of agreements, anyway.
Okay, Mr. Schlebow?
Well, I have to tell you, I have been, I've done my homework, and I've actually been for this, I thought I was going to be the lone person in this, and as a matter of fact, I met somebody that's going to speak to you at, at the FAC conference, and she said, oh, you're Citrus, I need to talk to you. And I said, actually, you don't, I'm, I'm, already did my homework and I'm good. And so I'm surprised, I thought I was going to have to take this off the agenda, so, you know...
All right, with that, we'll go to Greg. Greg, do you want to give us your opinion, or Madam Attorney?
I would just say, just if we're following the agenda, the first thing that we're supposed to do is have a public hearing in order to set the assessment, so if, as long as we're all know that that's what the agenda says, I'm sure Mr. Stewart is happy to give you his thoughts.
Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Stewart, give us his thoughts, and I'm going to open it up for a public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I discussed, in looking at this structure that is being proposed, there are two distinct legal issues. The first is the validity of the assessment itself, and our firm, and myself in particular, have done quite a bit of work on assessments over the years, and there are serious legal issues as to whether this is a valid special assessment under Florida law. The primary reason being that courts have held that assessments for hospital purposes or for medical purposes benefit people, not property, and therefore, they are not valid special assessments. However, having said that, the release that we've been talking about, there's two documents that we're really addressing, one is a release, one is a indemnification. Under the release, we have proposed language that if approved and signed by the hospitals would in fact cover the county. It would protect you because they would acknowledge all of the validity of the assessment itself. So that is an issue that can be addressed, and we have been, we've, we have, and I think that Commissioner Kennard mentioned, that we have gone back and forth in trying to work out that language, we are not there on the language, but it is workable. The other issue, which has become more problematic, is the indemnification. The second issue that we find that there's potential liability is if in fact, the federal government ultimately says that this is not allowed under federal law. And we've had, I've been on two calls with the expert for the group that is proposing this, and he described this as trying to navigate the program through two federal regulations, in order to make sure that it is valid. And so the concern that we have had from the beginning is, what if the federal government ultimately says this is not valid, and in fact, there has to be a clawback of money that is paid? Now, where we started two weeks ago, when the ordinance was adopted by this board, was there was a proposal from one hospital to indemnify not only for that hospital, but the other hospital. However, we got an email the other day from representatives of this group, that now neither hospital is giving an indemnification. And in fact, all they are willing to do is a release, but the release, again, only protects you as to the hospitals challenging the assessment itself, and it does not affect or provide any security if the federal government, or ultimately the state, ultimately finds that this is not an appropriate program. And so what we have insisted, and what we, the direction we got from this board last time, was to make sure that the citizens of Citrus County were protected, and that that indemnification was present for both entities. And currently, right now, we do not have any indemnification, and therefore, I cannot support this, recommend this program to this board.
Okay, I appreciate that. Madam Attorney, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak for or against. How are you?
Aye.
Good to see you today.
Good to see you. So my name is Colleen Ernst, I am an attorney, and I work with hospitals across the state of Florida, in particular, HCA and CHS here in Florida. I, I want to begin by saying thank you. Thank you for your time and attention on this. It is a complicated and, an issue that requires a lot of research and a lot of understanding. As, as we've heard, it involved work at the federal level, at the state level, and of course, here at the county level. I want to give my compliments to, to Mr. Stewart and to Ms. Lynn, thank you, you know, you, it was a, an ongoing conversation, and I, I think it's been very educational for me, understanding the goal of protecting the county, and I, and I think you are serving the county well in that regard. And thank you to the commissioners as well. You know, I've, I've had the opportunity to talk to a few of you, not all of you, but I will, I will do my best to, to help explain why we think the county is protected in this situation, and why this program is so important for Citrus County and the people of Citrus County. So I'll, I'll begin with something that was said. The goal here is to ensure that this county benefits from this program, and that this county is not putting itself at risk as a result of this program. Now, we've heard some terms thrown around about indemnity, releases, the critical point here is that the two hospitals are the only ones who will receive a bill by virtue of this program. This is not a program that will result in a bill going to any other taxpayer in Citrus County. The resolution today is a, a special assessment, which is a, a form of collection from these hospitals, so if passed by the board, those two are the only ones who see the invoice. Those two hospitals have approached the county asking for this program. Now, that's something you don't hear every day, someone coming up in front of you and saying, please send us a bill. The way that the program works, and I'll keep this very high level, because I, I think you've heard it before, but hospitals in Florida that provide Medicaid services, very important services, that is medical care to those who fall below a certain income threshold, and who have a qualifying disability or condition, when hospitals provide services to those individuals, they only get reimbursed about 60 cents on the dollar in Florida. Now, the financing for Medicaid involves the state putting up money and the federal government matching it. That's a partnership that works to make sure that hospitals get Medicaid funds. Now, why are hospitals in Florida only getting 60 cents on the dollar? Well, the answer to that comes from the fact that we have a, a balanced budget. We, we have to make decisions about how money is allocated. So Florida has put up the money that it was willing to put up, the federal government matches it, that results in 60 cents on the dollar. This program is a new program that Governor DeSantis's administration applied for in November of last year. It is a program where the state of Florida, when applying to the federal government, said local governments will collect only from non-public hospitals, so for Citrus, that's just two hospitals, send that money to the state, and if the federal government approves, then the federal government will match it, and those hospitals will get a little closer to that dollar of cost in providing the care that they provide for the needy members of the community. The federal government received that application, it approved in April, and yes, this has been a project that was fast-moving, and it is something that came about quickly, but the reason for that quick action is that in order for counties like Citrus and their hospitals to benefit, the window is, is short. The federal government approved this program for one year, meaning that the hospitals would say how much money they lost in providing Medicaid services during that calendar year, so October 1 of 2020 through September 30th of 2021, and if the county sends up money from those hospitals, the federal government will match it and help them get closer to whole. And here, the two hospitals not only are asking for this, they have said that they are willing to put in writing, they will not come after the county, they will not sue, they have forfeited their ability to come to the county. And for the federal money, the point I would make there is, if there's any concern about the federal government doing a clawback, the county never touches federal dollars, not at all. Once the federal government matches, it goes to the state and gets to the hospitals without any county role, so the county is not involved.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others speak for or against?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Josh Wooton, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. Admittedly, two weeks ago, I had not heard a lot about this, and I just asked you all to at least preserve the right to do a little more due diligence, I'm so happy that you have. I too have done some investigating and spoken to both CEOs, and I believe the attorney that just spoke may have been on a call that I was on, and I think she just laid it out in a very common sense approach that's very easy to understand. This originated, Governor DeSantis signed the bill, if the federal government does or doesn't do something, then I would imagine the program goes away. And, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to jump on Commissioner Kennard about calling it a scheme, because there's a lot of schemes in government about how you move money around and become eligible for things, and this is another one. But considering that this is two of our largest employees in the county that have extremely good track records, and that, this money is going to be reinvested into our county, and it doesn't appear that there's any liability that the state of Florida or the federal government wouldn't stand shoulder to shoulder with you, since this originated with them, we would urge passage of this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wants to speak for or against? Anybody else wants to speak for or against? Going once, twice, okay, we're going to go ahead and close, close the public portion of commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
Um, I'm just going to say, I haven't changed my mind, and the main reason is, is these were all great presentations, none of those people worked for us. You know, the people who work for us, three of them are telling you, don't do it, and we want to listen to the other side, we want to listen to the people that are telling us, oh, please, oh, please tax this, when last time it was called a scheme, because it says all it does is fatten the bottom line of the hospitals. No one is going to be turned away, that I understand that, that they take Medicare now, no one is going to be turned away if this doesn't pass, this is just money coming back to the hospitals. So, yeah, great, great presentation by everybody to get us to do something from the people that don't work for us. So if the people that work for us, that we pay for that information, I would be happy to vote for it. That's my whole position, and that's what I said before. So I don't really care what the hospital's lawyers say, or what Hernando's lawyers say, I... I care what Citrus County lawyers say and the people that we hire and our administrator, because that's who we hire and who we hold accountable, and I do. So if I follow our staff's recommendations and they lead us down the wrong path, they hear about it. Just the same thing, you can't hold them responsible if we, and we don't have to, we can disregard their advice, but Mr. Chair, I'm just telling you that it's all good explanations, it's all good talk. I don't believe anybody at the hospital is going to lose their job if we don't approve this today. I mean, you know, last time we were told the whole region suffers if we don't pass this. That turned out not to be correct. So I don't think this is a courtroom, I don't think it's up to us to negotiate these agreements. I thought we made it very, very clear, and in my mind, this is my speculation, we made it very clear what the bar was declared, and they chose, we'll just go to the county commissioners. We'll go under, we'll go around, and we'll get to the county commissioners and we'll get them to change their mind, and then that way we won't have to do what the lawyers and the administrator asked us to do. I'm not changing my position. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard, I'll come to Commissioner Schleba.
Yeah, I want to, I want to, I want to address the scheme comment. And I will tell you that, that obviously I felt very, very strongly about it because what I had envisioned had happened was that somebody found a little bit of a niche someplace in the, you know, a consultant somewhere said, well, if you can get your county to do this, then this is what we can do with it and this is how we can apply it, and ultimately the federal government has to pay you this money. Because I've heard those consultants give that type of advice before in a healthcare practice. And so that was immediately, and shame on me for not questioning more, but that was what I envisioned had happened. That's not at all what's happened here. What has happened is that the state of Florida has, has decided years ago now, has decided not to expand Medicaid, okay? And to give the, I guess, the 30,000-foot view of this, what that means is that we're not taking the federal money to give everybody Medicaid for the first couple of years, and then that burden, the federal money stops and the burden falls on the state. State lawmakers have wisely said, we're not expanding Medicaid because ultimately that's going to mean higher taxes on our residents. So what the state legislature did is they requested, it's in, it's in the documents that are provided there, the state legislature requested that the federal government do this, that the federal government approved this for the hospitals to be able to help them in treating these, the Medicaid patients that they do have. So this was, this was not finding that little, that little niche or that little crevice. This was by design coming out of the state legislature to the federal government. Now, I told you that, that I got to a level of comfort with the two, the two issues that Greg brought up. One was the validity of the assessment, which he felt that they weren't there yet, but that they felt, he felt like that was someplace they could handle, they could get to and handle contractually. Essentially, not essentially, both hospitals giving up their right to sue the county. The other point, the second point that was of concern was that if the feds invalidate or indicate that this is an invalid system for some reason and decide to clawback that federal money. What first got me to a position of comfort, and I hope it will you as well after, after Colleen just said that, is that the clawback would go to the person who received the money, and that's the hospitals. If the federal government decided to clawback that money, they would go to the hospitals and either say, you owe us this much money, or more likely, they take it out of current reimbursements to the hospitals. They just say, you owe us a half a million dollars and we're cutting it out of your next check. They don't wait for you to cut them a check, and then you got to fight to get it back from them. None of those federal dollars ever come through the Citrus County government. We, as she said, we don't touch that. And what sealed the deal for me was when I found out that in this agreement, there's a provision in there that gives the county government up to $150,000 in administrative fee. So under the, under the wildest, craziest circumstances that anybody could remotely imagine, we're still getting that $150,000 administrative fee that we could use if we had to for legal representation under that, like I said, that extremely remote circumstance. So given those things and then reaching out to, like I said, reaching out to the Hernando County Attorney, looking at the other, the many other counties actually that are dealing with this and passing this thing, that got me to a position of comfort. And what else did I want to bring up? There was, there was something about, there was, Greg had said something like, and I understand where he was going with it, but an assessment, a special assessment has to benefit people. This does benefit people. Commissioner Kitchen was right. Nobody's, if we don't pass this, nobody's getting fired. The hospitals have said they're still going to render care, they're still going to take care of everybody who walks through that door. That is, that's not what, what's at stake here. What is at stake is that our hospitals are absolutely losing nurses, our hospitals are losing doctors. We've got, both hospitals have made a great effort to expand their services here in our community. Bayfront Health, as we all know, went in the past year or two, opened up the freestanding ER. That benefits people. Working together as a team in initiatives like this, as Josh said, with two of our largest employers in the county, help to build the services, healthcare services that are offered to our community. So I think this does benefit people. Indirectly, I understand, but I believe this does benefit people.
Commissioner Schleba.
Thank you, and thank you for getting there. I know that couldn't have been very easy, but you did address what I was going to say, the clawback. I've talked about that with staff before and that's what got me there. I think one important thing that we haven't talked about is what's going to be coming back to the county that will be invested into better healthcare. And that is very important, and I think the citizens need to know that, that there is a considerable amount of money that will be coming back. And these are federal dollars that were already paid. These aren't, you know, new printed money. This is money that the state of Florida already paid into the feds. So you covered the 150,000. I was going to address that because that's a yearly, up to 150,000 for basically, you know, collecting two taxpayers' invoices and sending it to the state of Florida. I, what got me to this point is the, the legalese of a hamster wheel almost or Groundhog Day that it just was going around and around. And what made me feel comfortable about this is that they did sign off that they would not sue, so there wouldn't have to be the problem of in case they did get sued because there's, they're signing off on us. So that little hamster wheel has had me for a little bit, but I got through it, and that's what made me feel better about this. That being said, I would like to, I don't, I mean, is this a point that I can make a motion to execute a resolution by the board to adopt this non-advisatorium special assessment and with the, for the enhanced Medicaid payments for the two hospitals and make sure the clerk, authorize the clerk to record it?
Okay, we got a motion.
And I would second it.
Okay, we got a second. All right, Commissioner Davis.
So one of my jokes is that this job requires you to be an overnight expert in about 500 different topics.
Fire hose.
Yeah. And I've been a little, anyway, legal and medical are two things that are so not my bailiwick, so thank you, Dr. Kennard, for your long, 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 but very, very good explanation of the ins and outs of that. I appreciate all the research that both you and Commissioner Schleba did. I was already inclined to support this, and after hearing everything today, I'm absolutely going to support it. I wish we had a crystal ball. I don't go against our county attorney's advice very often, but in this case, I assured her before this meeting, if I voted this way, I said, I'm never going to sit there and blame it on the county attorney. I'm going to take the heat for the vote myself. But it does sound like it's a very well-balanced decision to make to go for it and kind of an easy thing.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Just a couple of comments. How much will the tax collector charge us to collect this? Anybody know? There will be-
I was told, I was told the tax collector's not involved at all. It's a direct payment, and I believe that was in my staff-
Is it a direct payment, or do they, do they?
Mr. Chairman, the assessment, if approved, would be collected by mail bill, and so the tax collector and property praiser would not be involved in the process.
Okay. And, and then the other thing, Commissioner Schleba said something that I was just curious about. She said she was worried about the clawback provision, but once she met with staff, that got her over that. What, my understanding is our staff is not comfortable with it. What is it that our staff said that made you comfortable getting over the clawback?
No, I said that I, that was a problem. I discussed it with staff and I worked my way through it because I, they were saying it's federal money, but we wouldn't be touching the federal money. It would be coming through to the hospitals. And that's, they didn't, they told me their opinion and I was trying to get through it.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, I guess, you know, I'm on the losing side of this. I just think it's a shame that we don't listen to the very people we hire. And we go out and we listen to all the other people that have some kind of interest in this, but we don't listen to the very people we hire. And we never did hear the final recommendation. We heard it from Greg, but we never heard it from our county attorney and our administrator, which I find fascinating because the majority of the board seems to have made up its mind without even hearing that. But with that, with that said, it is what it is.
May I? We, we heard their opinions in our staff briefings, so at least I did.
The public has them. So with that being said, Mr. Oliver, what's your opinion on this assessment?
I think everything's been said, been said well, and I think the opinions of the various individuals is pretty well-defined. I mean, Greg Stewart is the expert, you know, that was hired by the county with the neighbors' Giblin firm, and he's the one that's best positioned to provide the counsel.
Okay. And again, this is what I would like to say is, we hired outside counsel for a reason because he is the expert in it. And so it's not, that's why we hired out, you know, so I don't want to put anything on our county attorney. She's listening to outside counsel also, so that's why we hired Greg, so. Any other comments, Commissioners?
Yes, just one. I just think it's important that you know, I came to this on my own, and I'm thankful that others did, and the staff tried very, you know, to try to convince me, but they can tell you that I couldn't be convinced because I, I feel very strongly about this, and I think wiser people than a lot of us have come up with a way of getting money back into Florida that we have paid into. So thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Ayes. Nays?
Nay.
Nay. Passes 3-2.
To you, Greg.
Thought you were on an island alone?
Yeah.
All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and pull 03 up, if you don't mind, Board. That's a discussion of declaration of emergency for the flooding issues. So with that, you know, we did have a meeting on, a policy group meeting on Friday morning. It was a very good discussion. The group did decide to move forward with, you know, doing a state of a, an emergency. Again, you know, it's really a county of emergency is what I'm going to call it because the state hasn't issued a state of emergency and they haven't named us on that list. So therefore, you know, you're not, we're not prone to any county, or excuse me, any state or federal. But Amanda, if you want to come up also, please. As of right now, from, again, my conversations with David and Eric, with FAC, you know, they've been on the phone with emergency management, we aren't getting any money from the state. This will be a loan program, and so with that, I'll turn it over to our emergency management, Amanda.
Well, I had planned to come here today and kind of discuss the heartbreaking stories that, you know, we've all heard over the summer, but I think that you've probably heard enough of that, you know. It is, it's very heartbreaking what our residents have had to go through over the course of the summer, and I think we all understand it. Several of you have been affected by that, your families, so I thank you for putting this on the agenda today, and I think that several of you have reached out to me and wanted to know more on what we can and can't do. And I agree with you that this is, this is not something that the county really can do. There really is not a whole lot that the county can do. We cannot pump water to other places. We cannot go onto private property and fix roads. However, there is one thing that we can do, and I believe that we're going to do it here today, issuing what we call local state of emergency to address the flooding will actually put us in a position to qualify possibly for, as Chairman Carnahan has said, what would be small business administration loans. These are low-interest loans that are available through the Small Business Administration. The rates are currently below 1%. No, this is not free money. This is a loan. However, there are a small subset of individuals who would be able to qualify for these loans, and it would allow them to make these emergency repairs necessary for them to return to their homes. We have many individuals who have been displaced as a result of this unprecedented event. This is what we call a 100-year or 1% flood, meaning that there is a 1% chance that these properties on an annual basis will become flooded with water, something that has never happened before. And it is very unfortunate that people have bought properties in these areas that are low-lying and are not in an established flood zone, something that the county does not establish on their own. So having this local state of emergency will at least give us the opportunity to capture the, the damage assessments that we need to in order to move forward with this declaration. I had the fortunacy of going out into the county with Director Kevin Guthrie from the State Division of Emergency Management yesterday, who agreed with me that we are in a very sore spot as far as the flooding is concerned, but he also agreed that we do not meet the state declaration for emergency relief, which is approximately $30,000. So we do not meet that, so we will not be getting any federal funds, but we can apply for the SPA.
It's 30 million?
30 million. 30 million, sorry.
30 million, because they're, they're about to shake their head on 30,000.
30 million, sorry.
There you go.
30 million. So we, we do qualify for that, and he is working with the governor currently to get us, get us that, and we do need to move forward with the LSE though, in order to qualify for that. So I thank you for putting this on the agenda and doing what you can to help protect the citizens of Citrus County.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, let me just note that, as Amanda said, this is a SBA program. It is a loan program. To qualify, it's got to be approved by the governor, and then it's got to be approved by the president or at the federal level. I would note that at least 25 houses have to be damaged at least a 40% of it due to flooding. So there have to be 25 houses that have 40% due to flooding without flood insurance. That's the minimum criteria. We would send out our Building Services Enforcement staff over the next two or three weeks and do the, and do the assessment. We do have a map of what we've done on GIS that shows what is under 18 inches, which is kind, and what is over 18 inches. And I can't tell you that we meet the threshold here yet or not.
No. Go ahead, Amanda.
I, I believe that we have met the threshold. I did receive an Excel spreadsheet from Stormwater and Road Maintenance. They had received about 500 phone calls over the course of the summer where drainage issues were apparent. I read through the Excel spreadsheet and there were many properties on there that said that they were flooded out, not necessarily water into the home, but into their property. The SBA loan does quantify damage not only for water intrusion, but also for property loss, livestock loss, crops lost, any other personal property that would appear normally for the resident. I have also started taking the damage assessment reports that we have received from the citizen information line. damage assessment reports that we have received from the citizen information line. Yesterday alone, we received 33, which doesn't seem a lot, but that comes to what the qualification is for SBA. I know that we've received many others this afternoon. And this is only, this only represents people that are calling in. I'm sure many of the people that came up here today, I know I have not heard from many of them. I know a number of you have reached out to your constituents in your districts and asked them to report the damage as well. I would just encourage anybody who has damage in their home to please call the citizen information line. The number is 352-249-2777. And please, report your damage and send photos to either myself or the email address for Citrus EM, which is citrusem@sheriffcitrus.org to report the damage. The more damage we have reported, obviously, the better standing we have to move forward with the SBA loans. So.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
A quick question for anybody or everybody, just so everybody understands, this is not a grant. This is a loan. Do we know what the terms of the loan are? Do we know what the interest rates are? Do we know what the payback period is, that kind of a thing?
The loan rates are below 1% at this point. They change on a regular basis, but they are a low-interest loan that I think the term limit for payback is extremely long. I don't know the, the.
I think it's 30.
Yeah. It's like over almost a lifetime or whatever. So like I said, this would give people the opportunity that don't have flood insurance, just to make those emergency repairs, repair their air conditioning units, pump out their septic tanks, pump out their wells, and move back into their homes.
Okay, good. I just think it's important for people to understand that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I just want to throw out there, you know, from what I have been told, you know, it's more of water in your home versus in your yards. So again, they would have to meet that threshold. So commissioners, looking for, looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, you were involved in this. What is your, what is your recommendation?
Again, I've been very involved, not only with our locals, but also at the state level. Again, I just want to let people know, this is for, you know, from the conversations that I had at the state level on Thursday and Friday, lengthy conversations, we will not be receiving any FEMA or state. We do not meet the threshold. This is just a local state of emergency for you to get a low-income home if you qualify. I think that there's a lot of people out there that feel that they have water around their house, or septic or well. I, you're not going to qualify for that. This is going to be home, water in your home if you qualify. So, you know, we just want to be very upfront about that. We want you to know that you will have to pay this money back, but it does give you the opportunity to seize money if, because, because listen, there's a lot of you that live in an area that you didn't, you weren't required to get flood insurance. And unfortunately, now you're in an area that you're flooded because of the rainfall. So this gives you the opportunity to get money to help rebuild your home. But again, when it comes to septic and it comes to wells, I don't think you're going to qualify for that.
I just wanted to say that I appreciated you, you know, pushing on this and doing this because it, we have been hitting a brick wall at many levels. And I just wanted to tell you that. I appreciated that.
I appreciate that. So with that, you know, I would recommend we move forward. The great thing is we've got a lot of good sunny days ahead of us. We're getting into that dry season. And I'm starting to see a lot of water go away. I know where I live in Feral City, I live in a pasture, but there was water all around my house. It was, it was, when I opened it up to the public, they can, they could come forward. Just one second, I will. So with that, I would say, I'll make the motion that we, now, Mr., real quick, do we just need to do a seven day, or do we need to keep extending this? Or will one seven day give them the opportunity to do this?
I was gonna, I made a note to speak to you about that. Remember, this will automatically expire after seven days unless you all meet again and a majority of you votes to enact it past that date. So this will be good for seven days. And the answer to the question, I think Ms. Woodward might be better.
I just must, because that's the question I have for, do we just need to do one because, or are we going to need to extend it?
I think we can keep the citizen information line open.
Open and just do one?
Open with, without the local state of emergency. I can address that and get with you tomorrow if you want. But as of now, I think the seven-day hold is probably good enough because we can capture the damage.
That's what I was told also. So I just wanted to make sure that that was your information. So, okay.
Amanda, it's 249-352-249.
2777.
Thank you.
And that's for the citizens' information line to report damage.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do the local state of emergency.
Oh, sir.
We got a motion, my Commissioner Carnahan, second by Commissioner Carr. Now I'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to come forward to speak, please come and do so. Welcome. How are you?
My name is Janice Hampton. I live in Arrowhead. And from listening to what I've heard today, there are some other areas in the county that are worse off than we are at this time. And I'm really, give my condolences to all of you, you know, that are here today and to others that aren't able to be here today. What I wanted to follow up on is the issue regarding roads and the issue regarding private roads and the fact that you're unable to help us in Arrowhead because we're on private roads. Would it, is it possible to change that from private roads to a public road that would then qualify for assistance to repair those roads or to make them roads? I guess that's more the question. It's, they're almost not even roads.
Okay. We'll address that when we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I need you to fill a green card out, please. Thank you. Welcome. Come on up.
Just a real quick one. I spoke earlier about the roads. So we didn't hear anybody address, like where there's water, the roads are eaten out. We're doing this. Bought a new car because it bottomed out two of our cars. So what can they put in there? And I understand we have limestone. I understand we got the Florida issue with things that dissolve. What can the, we need somebody to come out there and say, this is what we can help you with. So you can keep going to your homes. So we don't have to go to a hotel. So we can protect our homes too. Because once you abandon a home, all right, so we already have abandoned homes in our neighborhood. So please address, who can come out and help us with this road issue?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else? And I can promise you, we're working on remedies to fix those problems right now. Staff is working on to look at the methods that we could come out and fill those potholes that have water on them. But unfortunately, yes, sir.
Frank Papson from Arrowhead. I want to thank Ms. Davis for what she's sent me so far. And we'll get back with her later. But my question, I keep hearing public roads, private roads. Well, here's my question. Arrowhead owns the roads in Arrowhead. And can they donate them to the county? Because, you know, then it becomes public roads. And all we, what we got to do is sign over the, over the rights to the roads.
Okay.
And that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Ah, thank you. And thank you, thank you all for today. And I appreciate the emergency order being enacted. We have a lot of people that we love that really are dire straits. My question is, okay, so I have a really good friend, used to work at the DOT in Tallahassee. And what he basically said is, long-term, you can fix the, fix the small when it drains off, right? But long-term, all those roads are squishy. You know, those are the terms that I've heard from Tiffany and from him and stuff like that. In other words, do we have as a county enough money to fix, right? There's going to be a lot of bad roads. So I don't know. I'd like to find that out.
Okay.
Anyway, have a great day.
And I'll give you some answers here in one second.
Oh, great.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. I want to bring back to the fact that it has been said by many in this county that where we are in Woodridge Country Estates, 495 and 488, should not have even been developed on. So here, we have put our life savings into these homes. I am now, I was out of work because of COVID for almost a year. I am now back employed and spending half of my salary to rent a vehicle so I can get out of my neighborhood. Because I can't get out. If we weren't supposed to be built on out there, why did the county approve it? And I realize that you all don't have that answer because you probably weren't even a twinkle in your parents' eye at the time.
I'll give you some answers there, too.
But from what I understand, and I've spoken to many engineers in this county, that have said that should have never been built on. And yet it was. And it was approved by the county and building is still continuing. So all this is going to do is get worse for those of us that have already had water and then make it worse for those that don't have the water yet. To say that the county isn't responsible for this, I say BS. I say BS. Because ultimately, you all allowed that building to happen and those plots of land to be sold and developed on.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wants to speak? Anybody else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Unfortunately, Woodward Estates have been flooded for years. I know people that have lived there and they have moved out there. I don't know when you bought your house, but, hold on, I don't know when you bought your house, okay? But that realtor should have told you about the flooding that goes on out there. Okay? So there, there's your clawback, okay? We do not set the parameters when it comes to building. The state and FEMA and the federal government, they, those do. We, you know, so if they're allowing these areas to be built on, that's their issue. When it comes to road, we have a huge problem in front of us. Okay? You know, I get calls all the time about the roads and I, and I tell them. I can promise you, those guys sitting back there have a list in front of them a mile long. And this board's fixing to have to make some very tough decisions. You know, we're doing $4 million in road resurfacing and things like that. But we have a lot of roads that are going to fail. They're failing now. I get calls every day about, hey, my roads are crumbling. So once this water goes away, we can get out there and assess the damage, then they're going to come back in and say, Board, here's your problems. And this is what it's going to take to fix. And I can't give you a number on that, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be 100,000. It's going to be, it's going to be up there, a big time. So, but, you know, to point the fingers at us, saying that it's our fault that you built out there, unfortunately, that's not the case because we don't set those standards, the state of Florida. Again, again, it's not our fault. So to point the fingers at us, Woodward Estates, it's been flooding. They were flooding back in the eighties. I know people that lived there. His house flooded three times. He finally moved out of there. Again, I, again, you can't speak from there. If you want to speak, you go, I'm going to ask you to leave. Simple as that.
Am I allowed to come up?
No, ma'am. You're done. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, but we already give you your due process. But again, that area has been flooded for years. I know for sure, I can give, Pastor Patrick lived there. His home flooded three times. He moved out of there for that reason. The gentleman that just bought, I just had this conversation. Somebody just come in and bought the home. And the first thing that we had, or that was asked to him is, did the realtor tell you about the flooding issue? So to me, they didn't. So there's your, there's going to be your avenues, going back and holding your realtor accountable for something they didn't tell you that was happening. So with that being said. But commissioners, any other comments?
I have Arrowhead, just to go back again on that. My suggestion, the problem with, there was, everybody needs to really know whether they live on a private road or a public road.
That's right.
So some of the folks that are asked, the ones that just had to buy the, two trucks, I'm still not, and you can't answer, but I'm still not entirely clear if you're on a public or a private road. If you're on a private road, we can do nothing. If you are on a public road, then you're in the queue. So as far as Arrowhead goes, there are no clear titles to those roads. And therefore, our normal, I'm just going to say this, I'm going to keep saying this until everybody in the county gets the message. If you live on a private road and you want your road to be paved and maintained by the county, there needs to be 50% plus one of the residents on the, or the lot holders on the road need to agree to have it added to their tax bill over 10 years, which makes it a reasonable number. If you bought a house on a county-maintained road, that was already built into the cost of your home. Therefore, the county can't turn around and give you something for free, essentially. The problem with Arrowhead, Arrowhead is a special case because there are no clear titles to the road, the roads that are just sort of been mowed through the forest, as it were. It requires 100% buy-in of the lot owners. So what I suggested to Mr. Papson was try to get 100% on an outer road where all the neighbors get to drive through a brand-new paved county-maintained road with a nice little sign that says, you want this for your section of Arrowhead? Give us a call. And so that might actually slowly start to change it because, man, that is a sticky wicket. That's all I got.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I believe the motion is about declaring a state of emergency. So we kind of got down, we kind of got down the road on roads. But while we're at it, let me, let me pile on and say, just remember, just remember when we put forward this local option sales tax for roads. Just remember that when you go to vote on it, okay? So all the people that were against the stormwater fee, you know, that if they have water in their yards now, they're all for it. The people that are against the road resurfacing fee, when their roads are destroyed, they may be all for it. So just remember this, as we go down that road, that there are needs, that there's just not enough money. One gentleman asked, Mr. Chair, how much will it take? I believe the number was 8 million a year for 20 years to get us back onto a 14.
Now, and it's between 20 and 25 years based on the contract.
There you go. There you go.
Contract price.
That's all.
Again, I tell you, interesting, so Florida Trend is actually doing these story now on Citrus County about where the last county is, it's a 6%. And everybody else is above that. And I told them, yes, we will be having a conversation on whether to put that on. We're discussing, put it on the ballot. And I told them, the reason is it has failed before. But anyway, with that, commissioners, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five, zero.
I did want to say, preach, Commissioner Kitchen.
All right. E1.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved, item E1, A through I.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Davis.
On I1, the price is 2,983,165. Commissioner Carnahan and I worked with Motorola and that was a very cooperative conversation. And we were very comfortable with moving forward. And that is for the radio and record system for the, essentially, the sheriff firing email.
And again, I think it was just a miscommunication, but they worked with us extremely well. The conversation went extremely well. We greatly appreciate it. And I told them that we were going to pass this today so we could get the contract back to them tomorrow. So I am very happy with the resolution that we come to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All parties involved.
Yeah, I want to vote for everything in the bids. And I was, I did circle I, that we usually don't spend $3 million without just a little discussion about it. So again, kudos to you and Mr. Oliver and the Sheriff's Department. Everybody worked hard to put this together. And the citizen should know that this $3 million is another $3 million that we had to spend, but it's for public safety and it's going to greatly enhance public safety. So again, we heard today, a lot of people coming up and saying, what are you doing with our money? Where's our money at? How come we have no money for this? There's another example of your tax dollars well spent, as far as I'm concerned. And I do appreciate the $83,000 savings. That was.
All right. Yeah, we appreciate it from Motorola. So with that, it was a good compromise. So with that, I'll open to the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak for? Excuse me? Anybody want to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close it. All right, commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five, zero. E2?
E2, approve budget transfers for solid waste housing administrative services fleet, NPDES, stormwater sewer phase two, Citrus Springs MSBU, and public works for fiscal year 2021.
Chair, move approval of E2.
Motion by Commissioner Davis?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment on E2? Any public comment on E2? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five, zero. E3?
Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting and amending the state housing initiative partnership ship and the Crystal River Runway Rehabilitation Program grants budgets for 2021.
Okay, commissioners?
Move approval of E3?
Commissioner, my Commissioner Davis?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sladebaugh. Is there any public comments on E3? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five, zero. E4?
Yes, approve the purchase and sale of agreement with Keith, Keith, I'm sorry, Kenneth D. and Shelby Colby, and authorize chairman to execute the same. And we would ask for approval of A, B, and C.
Okay.
Chair, make a motion to approve E4, E4, A, B, and C.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sladebaugh?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E4, A, B, and C? E4, A, B, and C. Seeing none, commissioners?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Where's the funds from this go?
Where have you all wanted to go?
The funds, the funds go to the shelter.
That's what we agreed, right?
The animal shelter.
That's correct. All cells.
That's what I said. That's what I thought we said. Sale of lands go to that.
Yep. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five, zero.
Ruthie, I'm looking out for you.
Ruthie, I'm looking out for you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
It's coming down, right? All right, E5?
Yes, E5, this is the grant from the state for the sewer project for the head of the Blue Water Project that Mr. Slayball got, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the Homo Sassa phase five septic sewer project amendment between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Citrus County.
Okay.
Chair, it's my pleasure to ask you to please approve E5.
Motion by Commissioner Slayball.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments on E5? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. E6?
E6, approve and authorize the chairman to execute a state aid to libraries grant agreement between the Florida Department of State, Division of Library Services, and Information Services, and Citrus County for fiscal year 21, 22. We would note these amounts are going down every year. The estimated grant, $61,077, and there is no match. We would ask for approval for A and B.
Okay.
Move approval of E6, A, and B.
Motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment on E6, A, and B? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. E7?
Yes, E7, A, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution authorizing the execution of an application resulting contract, any necessary amendments and other necessary documents after review by the county attorney for the Economic Development Administration, American Rescue Plan, travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation grant. This is a grant that we're applying for. B, direct staff to add the Inshore Reef Project total in $680,000 to the state expenditure plan during the current amendment period.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, item E7, A and B.
Got a motion by Commissioner Canard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slayball. Is there any public comment on E7? Any public comment on E7? Seeing, commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0.
Yes, these are the insurance renewals for New York Life Insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance. We have a stop-loss policy that limits our exposure on self-insurance, and this accepts the bid that they gave us for that after negotiation. We would ask for approval for A, B, and C.
Okay.
Motion to approve, item E8, A, B, and C.
Motion by Commissioner Canard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E8, A, B, and C? E8. Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. E9?
Yes, this is just informational, but I know Commissioner Slayball's been working on this very hard. I understand she has some checks to pick up yet.
Quite a few.
But donations to the animal shelter, this just shows where they're at as it relates to the various funding at this point in time.
And Chair?
Commissioner Slayball.
We get to add 8,500 on to there from the sale of that property? Is that what it went for?
All right, with that.
I think it was 8,450. It was 50 bucks below the appraisal.
We're just waiting on it. We're waiting on the big, we're waiting on the one from Best Farm. All right, E10?
Yes, E10, this is the employee increases. What this provides for is 3% across the board, 40 cents if you're at the bottom of the range, 20 cents if you're at the top of the range. This methodology was adopted so that over a period of time to 2026, we can get the minimum of all job classifications up to the $15 an hour required by the state.
Okay, commissioner.
With that, we'd ask for approval of A and B.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve, item E10, A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Canard. Second by Commissioner Slayball.
And this is for non-bargaining.
Is there any public comments? E10, any public comments on E10? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. F?
F, there are no changes, the appraisals for Pirates Cove.
E11, sorry, E11.
Oh, I'm sorry.
E11.
Yes. E11 is the funding for the radio system that was previously approved.
Okay.
And we would ask for approval.
Okay. All right, I know we brought this forward, and I know there's some discussion on this. I know Commissioner Canard had some concerns. Let's talk about the fire reserve funds. I know that we're probably using some of the, we're using a lot of those for the takeover EMS, so I think that needs to be explained to the board.
Mr. Chair, while he's looking for that, this is a discussion of the 3 million that we previously agreed to spend.
Right.
This is the discussion of where it comes from, right?
Correct. There you go.
Fire through cares, fire got 5.2 million. They had 143,000 in salary reimbursement. There were building projects that you all approved for that. And then, if you recall, apparatus replacement was about $2 million because you didn't wanna borrow those funds, so it was taken out of here. Available balance is $2,342,470. The CAD system, the one-third for fire was $994,389. We've acquired six ambulances and paid those off for $935,239, and the adjusted balance after those particular entries is $452,843.
Commissioner Canard?
Yeah, Randy and I talked about this this morning, and I will tell you, the only beef that I have with this is that when we raised the fire MSBU, I believe it was, we talked about a schedule of purchasing new equipment, changing out stuff, and there was a whole financial plan that was put into place on how that was gonna take place. Then, this ARPA money comes along, and that plan changes. We just pulled $2 million out of this, out of fire reserves that should have been there to help fund this CAD system.
Hold on, let Commissioner Canard finish.
So, the replacement of the apparatus or the truck, whatever we ended up buying, spending that $2 million on, that should have been financed as was originally proposed when we raised the MSBU. That's not money that should have been pulled out of this. So, had it not been pulled out of there, there'd still be sitting additional $2 million in fire reserves to help us cover the cost of this CAD system, so.
I can pull the agenda item. The board approved that, the discussion focused around that they wanted to get out of the finance, you all wanted to get out of the financing arena. This got us out of the financing arena so we didn't have to fund future interest payments and debt payments, because Chief Stevens' original plan had you financing it for about five years into the future. And the decision at that meeting was, is that this would put an end to that so we could do everything as pay-as-you-go.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kitchen? I'll let Commissioner Canard finish.
Well, I was just gonna say, I believe they're both right.
Yeah.
I believe that Commissioner Canard is exactly right. We presented the plan. We said, okay, do it. Go get what you need. And when Randy said, hey, here's found money, we said, let's take the found money and pay it off.
So, here would, go ahead, Commissioner Canard.
So, my question is, can we reduce the fire MSBU? Because now it won't be needed to pay off that apparatus in interest.
No.
No, of course not.
Well, the question that I would have then, okay, since we've done that, I wanna see a plan moving forward with the money we have coming in from the fire MSBU.
That's fine. We can do that. Craig can update that plan. That's easy.
Yes, I think that we need to bring it to us and update us on the money that is coming in, on how we're gonna move forward with fire. Well, look at it now, fire.
Well, I would do fire any EMS.
That's right. That's what I said.
Well, I think. That's fine. I think what we're gonna see, and we'll see when it comes forward, but what I think what we're gonna see is, we had a list of projects and apparatus that needed to be financed, and that's why we raised the MSBU. Well, now that we've taken those apparatus and we've paid those things off with this other pot of money, now we can add more projects and priorities into that list. So, we still need this high MSBU to cover all these new things now.
Well, again, that's why I think it needs to come back in front of the board. We are the ultimate decision policymakers, so we'll set the pace forward on whether and how we're going to spend this money. So, that's on our plate.
We can prepare the schedule. That's no problem.
Okay. Commissioner Slayball, anything? Commissioners, anything?
I would like to see a side-by-side comparison of what the priorities were and what was gonna be financed when we raised the fire MSBU with what is the new list of priorities and projects that are gonna be paid for with that same high MSBU.
Okay.
We can do that.
All right, good. All right, so with that, looking for a motion here.
So, the motion would be to approve the cost allocation?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking for?
Correct.
Well, Commissioner Canard, are you happy with this now? Well, I won't say happy. Is that?
You got okay with it.
This is one of those plug your nose.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Okay. Well, I'll move approval of the cost allocation.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kitchen, I'll second that. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? E11. Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners?
Chair, is that for item F?
Item E11.
E11.
It's an add-on. Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. Now, we're on F.
Yes, F, the only, and it doesn't need to be deleted off there because we'll have it in by hopefully mid-October, when they say the Pirates Cove appraisal's due, and then I've added the reconciliation for fire and EMS per discussion a few minutes ago.
Okay.
So, there are no changes.
Okay.
G2, G1 is, staff recommends the board approve funding for the listed projects and authorize the application for SWIFT MUD for CFI funds for the 2023 budget cycle. Staff request that the board rank the projects in the order presented. Staff request administrator to execute the ranking and funding letter required for application. This has to be submitted to SWIFT MUD by the end of the month.
Okay. All right, commissioners?
Chair, move to approve G1, A, B, and C.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Slayball?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments on G1, A, B, and C? Any public comments? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 4-0. We'll get Commissioner Kitchen when he comes back. G2?
Yes, G2 was something that was asked for at the last meeting and very appropriate, perhaps after today's discussion. What this does is set up a workshop for November the 9th at 9:00 AM to discuss the formula for residential road resurfacing for the benefit of the two new commissioners. We'll go through that. I think you've been privately told, but then the public will understand also. And then, look at potential funding options, which one of those options is a local option sales tax.
Okay, commissioners?
Chair, move approval of G2?
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Second by Commissioner Slayball. Is there any public comments on G2? Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners?
I'd like to, Chair, excuse me, be referred to as a freshman commissioner, no longer a new commissioner.
Okay, that's fine.
You're not a freshman anymore. You already met the budget cycle. All right, once you go through budget, you're in.
Then I'm no longer.
And once you pass November, you're a veteran.
Yeah, you're a veteran, yeah, so you're good. Once you get that budget, you're good. No more freshmen, no more newbies. So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 4-0. We'll get Commissioner Kitchen. When he's here, Commissioner Kitchen on G1.
Which is your raise?
No, I.
Okay, we got a 5-0 in G2, establishing a workshop for road resurfacing methodology.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we got an I there, so it's 5-0 there. All right, we've been through all the H's. I.
Yes, this is, accept with regret the resignation of Karen Reeves from the Special Library District Advisory Board, and B, announced vacancy available and taking of applications for one regular member position on the Special Library District Advisory Board term will expire January 31st, 2022.
Mr. Chair, move we accept with regret the resignation of Karen Reeves from the Special Library District Advisory Board.
Motion by Commissioner Kitchen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slayball. Is there any public comments on E1? Any public comments on I1? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. Committee reports. Who's got committee reports? Mr. Davis, anything?
No, Chair, I don't.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Not this week.
Commissioner Slayball?
No, sir.
Commissioner Canard?
Just real quick, from the MPO, we got an update on the electric vehicle infrastructure master plan, and there was some, there was some pretty extensive discussion about using gas tax money for putting in the infrastructure for moving electric vehicles, and moving electric vehicles primarily along the CIS in the state. And what was explained to us was, this is just laying out a plan for, in the event of an evacuation, you still have to move these folks with electric vehicles along. And, um, there was, uh, again, quite a bit more discussion about, well, then they need to figure out a way to start charging these folks an equivalent to the gas tax so they can contribute to the planning and the infrastructure construction of, uh, you know, the facilities that are needed to charge these vehicles in the event of, uh, of an evacuation. So it was an interesting discussion, and, uh, that went back and forth a little while. Uh, we did, uh, also, the board voted to approve unanimously, Bob Esposito, who we're all familiar with as, uh, as the next director, he will be, uh, he will be starting as a director in December. So that was all that I had for you from the MPO.
All right, K1, Commissioner Davis.
Sorry, I missed it.
Yes, Chair, um, I think everybody is aware, um, in our various staff briefings, but the public needs to know, we were going to do strategic planning, or, uh, strategic planning town halls on October 16th and 23rd in person, um, hosted by the University of Central Florida Strategic Group. And their attorney, um, those doggone attorneys mess everything up. Their attorney, um, is no longer allowing in-person sessions, so we're going to have to change to an online thing, um, or delay. And I, my immediate reaction, and of course, I, I am a strategic planner by trade, so my immediate reaction was, oh, it has to be in person, but, um, there is a, what is, what is, uh, most beneficial, getting it done now versus some future time, wait, and who knows when it's going to happen, or taking the chance that a digital event would, uh, be just as beneficial. Based on, um, the report I got from Crystal Rivers Online, because they did the beginning part of their charrette during the lockdown last year, they had outstanding results, and based on what UCF, uh, Mariah Raines has said about how well they had gone before, I do think that we should, and based on a few other people I've talked to, I do think we should go forward with October 16th and October 23rd. And this item, K1, is to approve sponsorship of ads in The Chronicle and Facebook to make sure that we get enough turnout for those, um, sessions. Additionally, uh, the, our, uh, fine Citrus County library, uh, system is also teed up to help with any residents who are not comfortable, uh, going on this digitally. So I think I've got it all wrapped up. So Chair, I move approval of K1, A, and B.
Got a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kitchen?
I'm gonna second that. I know Commissioner Davis is gonna fall out of her chair here, but I'm gonna,
I'm gonna, if I, can I, can I speak to it quickly?
Yep.
Um, here's my feeling on this. A, um, you know my feelings for giving The Chronicle $1,950, and Facebook ranked right up there for 300, but here, but here's my feeling. We, um, we have supported Commissioner Davis from the beginning on this, um, endeavor, and it would seem to me, since we're paying the money for the event, if this is gonna maybe help it to be successful, it seems like a small amount to pay to help with the success of the event, because I'd hate for the event to roll around and then people say, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. It was, so, Mr. Chair, even though, you know, for all other reasons, I'm not a big fan, I will support Commissioner Davis's request for the additional 2,250.
All right, so we got a motion, we got a second. So is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, uh, we'll bring it back here. I'm gonna support, uh, it also, and I'm gonna go along with Commissioner Kitchen's comments. Any other, Commissioner?
Yeah, the only, my, my only comment is, is I am concerned about doing the public input portion electronically or virtually. Uh, I just, you know, I don't, I don't know how successful that's going to be, but you've done your homework, you've talked to the folks in Crystal River and to the folks at CF, so.
Okay.
All right, I'm on board, I'm supportive.
Um, my question would be that I, I'm a little concerned about the virtual, and that being said, because the city of Crystal River is, what, 2,500 people, and we're talking about a whole county. The experts would know better than I, but that is a concern that I have, because I do, you know, my, we all have a, uh, senior, um, citizens in our, in our each district, and I don't know how, um, how up to date some of them are virtually. That, that would be my only.
They did, if it, if it helps any, um, they did have quite a, a good senior turnout with the online portion of the Crystal River one, so that was my concern as well. Um, I, my mind was playing up, we were gonna delay it, but after I, you know, have to do your due diligence and your homework and check into things, and, um, you know, again, I really wish there was a crystal ball in this job that, you know, doggone it, they promised me one, but I do actually believe this would be successful, and who knows when we can go in person, because UCF is going, has been really, really, really conservative on this, um, all along.
Well, I think it's ridiculous, okay, about what C, UCF's doing, okay? I, I, the cases are coming down every single day in our briefings, but, uh, again, I'm gonna support you on this. Um, I, I, you know, I, I know what I think about strategic planning, but again, I'm gonna support you on this because we supported you all the way through, uh, so we'll see you, see if it's a success or not.
And I would just sum up by saying, all this other discussion comes under the heading of, it's your thing, sink or swim.
And again, and again, I'll, I'll state, but, you know, my position on strategic plans, this county, uh, Clark's out there, he, I don't know how many strategic plans we have done, and they're all sitting on a shelf out in the county, uh, and, and nobody pushes them through or follows them. That, that, that's my biggest concern.
I'm actually not aware of any strategic plan for, for what I'm talking about doing.
But again, but there's,
Which might be a little different animal than you're thinking.
I promise you, there's about six out there, but anyway. With that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five zero. Commissioner Cannard?
Excuse me?
Are you interrupting again?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I believe we might have a discrepancy with some of the letters and initials we have previously voted on. I, I'm being told that you voted on E11, but there is no E11, it's E1I. However, I look and I see an E1I, so I'm not sure, Madam Clark, what the issue is.
It is an E11, it was added.
It is E1I, you're right.
No, I,
Well, we,
I hear it says additional information, item.
It is E1I. But, so with that being, so with that being said, we already voted on it, so we didn't, so you can take the 11 off.
Chair, that's, yes, that was already voted on, that's why when I asked about item F, and you said we were on item E11, and you had a vote on something that I didn't have.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion that, that the second E1I now becomes E11, and we voted on that, or we vote on that again if we have to, if that's what we have to?
Okay, so. I have no item for that.
Can we just strike it?
Can't we just strike E?
No, you can't strike it, because I can't, I can't pay Motorola without.
The bottom line is we've,
E1I was already voted on. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
E1I.
Yeah. All right, hold on, let's, let's, everybody stop here. All right, so can we take out E1I and put in E11? Because we, we had a discussion, and we voted on E11.
Are they two, are they two separate items?
No, they're tied.
They're, they're both. They're tied together, they're for the Motorola system. All this does is tell you how it's funded.
Or we just leave it the way it is. I mean, to me, you voted on it twice.
I would vote on it as E1I, as part of E1I.
Well, we already voted yes on E1I, okay.
Yeah, they already voted E1I. I, I would just, uh, make sure the record is abundantly clear that the previous vote for E1I included the, included the additional information that was provided as E1I.
It did, and we voted five zero on that.
Okay, there were, Chair, there was different verbiage on E11 that you had not stated on E1I. You had just voted on it all together as an item.
We did.
And then you had different verbiage on the E11.
Well, I don't know if there was any different verbiage, I think it was a discussion, more of a discussion.
Well, it was cost allocation.
But we still voted five oh on that one, too.
Yes, you did, but, so as long as we have E1I, as I had, okay.
Five oh.
Mr. Chair, can, can we combine, just to say E1I passed, including the cost allocation?
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be ideal.
Okay. Okay.
So are you going back to alter the original motion to include cost allocation? Is that what you're stating?
Yeah, so.
Yes, that would be his motion, and who seconded that?
And that was by Davis.
Okay, but you good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that being said, Commissioner Cannard?
Oh, I have nothing.
Commissioner Slaball?
No, sir, nothing.
Commissioner Kitchen?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, I got discussion on emergency management services, which is EMS, on the funding of that. So Commissioners?
That's been taken care of.
That's been taken, I thought that, I don't know why it's on there, but anyway, that's been taken care of. All right, so again, we're going to O2, vote and discussion on waterfront setbacks. Uh, you have backup material. Um, again, I, I think it's time to make a change. Um, you know, in 2018, I voted against this, but, uh, I, I'm here to tell you what I'm seeing, uh, more and more of, it's just nothing but denials. Uh, we've got great engineers that are, are doing a good job, so I, I think we need to have a discussion on, um, on waterfront setbacks. Commissioner Cannard?
Uh, I'll go ahead and dive into this. Okay, well, to take us back to that discussion, uh, at the time, we had a, uh, we had an individual working for the county, Mark Green, uh, who is absolutely brilliant in stormwater management, had spent many, many, many years, uh, of his career dealing with stormwater. And what he told us at that time was that, uh, setbacks are for aesthetics. Setbacks are for making a community look, um, making houses look all at the same distance, uh, from the road, from the water, that type of thing. The nutrient in stormwater runoff was handled through engineering, engineering stormwater systems. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, that Randy at some point during the conversation, if not publicly, then I know for sure privately, has said, I can engineer anything you want me to and stop, to stop the nutrients from going in there. It's all a factor of money. Um, so the, the argument that was made at the time, and, uh, fell short, was that the stormwater setback number, or, or the waterfront setback number, was just an arbitrary number that was being pulled out of the air, whether it was 50 feet, or 40 feet, or 20 feet, or whatever, that it was, it was an arbitrary number, that there should be a formula for figuring this out so that you achieve what the goal of setbacks are. And the goal is, um, is aesthetics. Now, what we want to do, obviously, is ultimately have a net environmental gain out of this. So if you're going to, uh, if you're going to address waterfront setbacks, let's, i- in the sense of possibly, you know, considering reducing them, let's look at ways that we can improve the environment along the way, and that absolutely can be done. Uh, there have been, uh, there have been numerous applicants that have gone, uh, before the, uh, before the PDC with a situation at their existing home where they have no stormwater management whatsoever, and they're looking to add an accessory structure, and part of, uh, their ask is adding an engineered stormwater system that, uh, will treat not only the existing stormwater that's hitting their property, but any additional stormwater runoff that would be created as a result of them constructing this, uh, this accessory structure. Now, part of the argument has been, you know, we have what is very much an archaic system of aberm and swale. You know, you build this, it captures the rainwater, rainwater, you know, the stormwater filters through the ground, and ultimately out to the waterway after it's gone through this natural filtration system. And the argument has been, you know, once you mow that, that thing for a year, uh, or two years or three years, it becomes flat ground, now your stormwater system is gone away. Um, we've all received the, uh, an email that, um, uh, that Mr. Stillwell, uh, an application that he has put in, uh, for a, a text amendment, to address, uh, stormwater, to address our, our, um, our variance process. And I think we need to, we need to, uh, set a date to, uh, to revisit this, revisit the LDC, how we handle, uh, stormwater, how we handle our setbacks, and go about it in a more, um, uh, logical, science-based, um, uh, method, rather than, oh no, you can't change setbacks, why? If, if the idea is to stop the nutrients, let's have that conversation. Um, and I think there's, there's ways that, there's ways that we can do that, and there's folks that can help us to get there, so that ultimately we can reduce the number of applicants that are going to the PDC. You know, i- if, if all of these, so many of these applications that are going to the PDC are, um, a variance request for a pool, for a shed, for a house, whatever it might be, I would venture a guess to say probably more than, more than 70, 80% of them are for accessory structures. There's very few, um, vacant lots left, waterfront vacant lots, um, that, uh, where there's a new home construction. So the majority of these are going to apply to accessory structures, and I think that needs to be addressed. I think there's a, there's a, um, uh, we need to take a more comprehensive look at this, and get those numbers, uh, addressed, get our, um, our, address our criteria for variances, which definitely needs to be addressed. And, uh, I think all of that can happen a- at a, um, I think, I guess we need to set a, a date for a public hearing, maybe, to, to go through this. Uh, I'm not sure where, where we go with it.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kitchen?
I was gonna. Well, this, their answer may help out a little bit, too. Um, I understand what you're saying? Agree with what you're saying, or your comments? Uh, this kind of goes back to where we were this morning, except now we gotta remember three years back. I gotta remember what I said three years ago. Seems to me, I'm trying to remember, but I believe I voted against changing it, and I think it was related to, I'm just, I'm trying to remember now, but I think, one, it was related to that we had actual scientists get up and disagree with our staff person's, uh, point of view, that, I don't know.
Charles Lee?
No, no, I think it was somebody from the, from one, one of the colleges got up and said, hey, no, there's science behind this, there is real science. And also, it seems to me, we had an outpouring of the community that live on the water, come out and saying, don't you dare change this. And then we had the editorial board bounce on top and say, don't you dare change this. So call it scientific evidence, call it political pressure, whatever you may call it, but I thi, I'm, I'm trying to remember, but I, I, does anybody remember? Didn't we have somebody from some, with some scientific background to say, this is not just aesthetics, there is, there is a reason for this 35 foot?
We had, we had everyone in our group that wasn't from here, in our county here. Uh, so, again, you know, at that time, I, here, in, in, that's what I'll tell you, we did, we had a lot, and I voted against it also. But at that time, I'm just gonna be honest, uh, the, the PDC was giving variances, and they were doing things that were reasonable. Today, it's not happening. Uh, and, and so, again, when I see it, it's time to make it change. And again, the, there is scientific, uh, there is, uh, engineers that are willing to sign and stamp and, uh, to, to use, you know, correct this, um, treat stormwater. So it can be treated, um, and, and again, so I, I'm ready to move forward and, and change any setbacks, uh, to, to, to something reasonable, uh, to help residents, so.
We gave you the language that the PDC recommended changing.
Correct.
Uh, as backup. If you all wanna, uh, go forward with that language, Ms. Lynn will know the process. I don't know if it needs to come back before the PDC and come up, or whether you can take that language that you didn't approve or go forward with before and reconsider it.
Ms. Lynn?
It sounds, uh, from Commissioner Cannard's discussion that perhaps it goes beyond just what is in that proposal, so I don't know if you all want to have a workshop to talk about the combination of the variance standards, the stormwater rules, and the setback rules, because I, it sounded like in his discussion, I could be wrong, but it sounded like in his discussion that there's more than just the view issue.
There, there is, and that's, we, we need, I, I wanna see us take, take a, a, as I said, a comprehensive look at this and get it fixed. Um, there, there are a number of reasons, you know, we, we can sit here and say, all right, let's pull a number out of the air, and we're, we're gonna change, you know, we're gonna match Crystal River, and we're going to 35 feet. Well, if we change that 35 feet, you can, you can do that with the LDC. Um, now we've got, uh, a, uh, you know, if you're, if you're, yeah, if you're in a, in a, uh, what is it, high hazard zone?
Yeah, high hazard, high velocity zone.
Yes. Um, now, my understanding is we've got a floodplain issue, so you're still going back for a variance. And then you're still gonna have to meet all of these different criteria for the variance that FEMA has their own criteria for, for, uh, getting a variance. FEMA's concerns, now, we, we are concerned, and we're going to address, uh, the stormwater runoff, uh, water, water quality. FEMA doesn't much care about those things. They care about property and personal protection, to make sure your house isn't gonna get, you know, washed away. Um, so those things, I, I think all of that stuff needs to be addressed.
I con, I concur with you 110%, we, we need to do this, we need to do it right, and we need to incorporate all this. So it's done. So, uh, Commissioner Slaball, you had a comment?
No, I was gonna ask you a question, but he actually answered it, so thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any other comments right now?
So I guess this goes out the window, and we come back with an all-new one, is that what we're talking about, or?
No.
I don't, I don't know if it goes out the window, but I think, I think the Commissioners, Commissioner Cannard is looking for a more comprehensive answer, so it would include more than just the planning issue, but also the engineering issue.
Here, here's what I would say, and, and I'm gonna make a motion, so I know there's some people in the audience that, that can get up and speak to this. I'm gonna make a motion that we have a workshop as soon as possible, uh, to get this in front of us, and, and to get the language, and, and to get all the variables, because there's high-impact zones, all that needs to be FEMA, all these need to be addressed, uh, moving forward, so we can take care of it in one shot. So I, I, Mr. Oliver, when would be the quickest that we can get, tell you a workshop in?
Probably the 26th of November, because we've got a workshop, the first meeting in November.
And what's that one?
Uh, road resurfacing and sales tax.
When is the board reorg this year? First meeting in November? No.
Is there two meetings in November?
Yeah, definitely, there's one on the 30th.
Oh, that's right, at the very, very end of the month.
End of the month, there's one on the 30th, we reorganize.
And there's one on the 9th.
And engineering's gonna have to get their stormwater, that, that stormwater, uh, thing together.
I, I want this done quicker versus later. I mean, uh, I mean, I, I know what your thoughts are.
Can we add it on to another workshop? Do we have, do we have a workshop that's, uh, these tend not to be that long, Mr. Chair, I mean, it's one of our last workshops.
That was gonna be my question.
You wanna put it on the November 9th with the gas tax and sales tax?
I do, yes, I do.
Okay, that's fine.
That should be a very quick.
And let's start at 8:00 AM, and we'll start at 8:00 AM versus 9:00.
That's fine, that's your call.
That's, that, that would be my motion, is to put it on the 9th, uh, we start at 8:00 AM, and we get these workshops knocked out, so that's my motion.
Jack to 8:00 AM.
All right, I'll second.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second, open to the public.
Did you say the reorg meeting is on the 30th?
That would be.
Is that what it is?
I, I don't know whether it's.
Well, the 9th, it may be the 9th, it may be the 9th.
Okay.
See, the 9th and the 30th, I know it's usually later in the month.
And, and Chair?
Anyway. Go ahead, I'll, I'll run my.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Clark Stillwell, P.O., Box 250, Inmanis, Florida. Um, Commissioners, last time when you spoke, I was really tired, and it was long. I might have been a little abrupt, and, uh,
Never, you're never abrupt.
So, um, you have my work product, okay? But I wanna just frame it for you real clear. Let's just take the typical lot, okay? 50 feet off the front of the road, center line, 25 feet off the right-of-way. Now, you got a septic tank. Septic tank's 75 feet from any water body or wetland. You got a well. Well's got a 75-foot radius around it. Five-yard side yard setback, 50 feet for floodplain off the water body or wetland, or 35 feet off of the water body or the wetland for surface water. And then you got a house that was built in 1986.
There you go.
Okay? Or worse yet, you got a house that was built in 1975, when there were no standards. FEMA has very specific standards. They have their own definition of hardship, it's in your code. It's a tougher definition than your definition for surface water. But we, when we file an application, we not only get to have Section 440 standards applied to our surface water application, we get the Section 440 standards applied to our floodplain application. And the floodplain application is all about, as Commissioner Cannard pointed out, public safety. They don't care if you got a non-conforming lot or irregularly shaped lot. They don't care if you're a cell. care if you're a self-inflicted problem, okay? And they don't care whether or not you're getting a reasonable use of the property. They do want you to minimize, which is appropriate under their definitions. So therein lies all those setbacks, all those rules, and you do have Mr. Green's work product, which was ready to go to public hearing, which would have addressed water quality in a, in a big way. Basic fact is, and I have to almost eat my words, because I said, I was, last time, I said, I'm done with my last variance hearing, damned if I go out and don't get one approved, you know, five to two. But I was on a twenty-three acre parcel with a, not a house around it, and, uh, it, it was a real surprise to everyone in the room. So I would say to you, this desperately needs to be done, these people, they don't want to contaminate or impair the surface water quality, they're well aware of floodplain, but they sure would like to put a screen on top of their porch to keep the noseums out without having to get a variance application. And that's the kind of thing that's going on. So balance it, but I'm in favor of the workshop, let's get started, you have my work product, I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Chair? Real quick suggestion, don't send me attachments, I don't open attachments, send, send me as a, as a, as a text, okay?
I'll get it there.
Okay.
It just, it was on a short fuse to get, get something here, you know?
No, I understand. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Anybody else wants to speak on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, any other comments?
Can I ask a question?
You can always.
That was November ninth at eight AM?
We will start, and workshops at eight.
Bet it on the ninth.
On the ninth.
And we're gonna do the setbacks, and we're gonna do gas tax and road resurfacing.
Well, I figure what we'll do is, we'll, we'll, we'll start with gas tax, and we'll start with the roads first, and then we'll, then we'll do, um, those, uh, waterfront setbacks last.
Okay, we can do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four-zero, and I'll get Commissioner Slayball when she comes back in. Uh, commis-, Madam Attorney?
Madam Attorney? Sorry, sir, I have nothing.
Okay. We will go back now to open to the public, if anybody wants to come in front of the board and speak on any issues, uh, the podium is open. The podium is open, does anybody wanna come and speak? Open to the public. Going once, going twice, okay, we'll, we'll close, uh, open to the public, our next, um, upcoming meeting is October twelfth at one PM, uh.
You have to wait for, don't you have to wait for her to vote on that one matter?
I do, I'm, but I'm, um, I know nature coaches still here, is there anything we need to address with them while they're here? No, you're good? Okay. All right, so with that, our next coming meeting is October twelfth, October twenty-sixth. And November ninth, we will have workshops starting at, um, ni-, excuse me, eight AM, uh, and then we will have our meeting at nine. Commissioner Slayball, uh, what is your vote on my motion?
And your motion was?
On the workshop on waterfront setbacks.
Oh, yes, yes, aye.
Aye.
Even at eight o'clock? Oh, yes, I do, I do disagree with that.